Good evening, everyone. This is the December 14th Town Official Planning Board meeting. We're calling the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
About.
Well, first, I wanted to wish everyone happy holidays and best wishes for the coming New Year. A few reminders. Felix Lopez will not be able to attend tonight, so I'd like to appoint Kevin O'Connell as a voting member for tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
I also have good news to report. All Planning Board members have met the minimum annual training requirement of three credit hours specified in the town code. And in many cases, actually, have exceeded the minimum training requirement. So thanks to all the members for that accomplishment. And also, I wanted to briefly mention Louise Daniele's term on the Town Board will be ending on December 31st of this year. And among her many duties, Councilwoman Daniele served as the Town Board Liaison and attended many of our meetings. I talked with her often. She wanted me to thank all of the Planning Board members on her behalf for the Planning Board's hard work to serve on this important board. Louise says that volunteering on the Planning Board is the most time-consuming board there is. I thought the Town Board was pretty time-consuming, too, but that's okay. And she appreciates each member's time and dedication to make sure that decisions are made in the best interest of the town and residents. And in turn, I'd like to thank Louise on behalf of the Planning Board for her time and dedication, for her work as a liaison to the Planning Board, and for her overall service to the town. Thanks, Louise. Another quick item, I'd like to ask John Bodendorf. Could we quiet that down, please? Mine is buzzing, which is one thing, but having a funny, yeah, having a funny voice on while I'm talking is pretty annoying. Yeah, there will be no video playing or watching any TV shows during the meeting, please. Oh, well, I'm sorry, Anthony.
I wish, but I'm taking notes here.
So, Mr. Bodendorf, you've visited the herring sanitation site to observe the grading issues raised by the O'Malleys.
Yeah, I did.
You did submit a memo, but if you could just give us a quick overview of what happened?
Sure. It was, I believe, the Thursday after Thanksgiving, I met out there with Joel Petrus and Larry Pajee, who is the applicants engineer. And we looked at the existing grade from a couple of different known elevations, and it appeared to be in conformance with what was approved by the board. We didn't observe any apparent drainage issues, but at that time, it had been dry. So I would like to go back out after or during a rainstorm and see if there's anything going on with that. But as far as the grading goes, the approved finished floor elevation was 103. And like I said, from where we stood at the road, at the back corner of the O'Malleys house, it appeared to be just about at that elevation.
Well, I think there's going to be another storm coming up this weekend, like Sunday into Monday, just like it was this past weekend. And it's supposed to get a couple of inches of rain, so that might be a good time to look at it.
Yeah. I have a pretty open schedule next week, so if there's active rain on Monday, I'll certainly try to get out there to take a look.
Okay.
Kevin, can you add up the submit, if I will, some photos and comments?
Sure, if you could leave them with Debbie, that would be fine.
So we can review your decision, rectify the situation. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, and thanks for coming.
The grade is like four feet above the, the, you tell people at least remove.
So. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the approval of the May 11th, 2023 meeting minutes. We sent some corrections on the draft minutes to the planning office, I did at least. And just wondering if members have any additional comments or corrections for the May 11th minutes?
No.
If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the May 11th, 2023 meeting?
Some move.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Bob? No, that was Bob. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes. I think we have seven voting members, right? Yep, seven, zero. The next item on the agenda is, hold on one second. All right. Is a public hearing. It's our one public hearing tonight. Star of Bethlehem Baptist Church Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. At 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible, the applicant seeks site development plan and special use permit approval to utilize the existing building located at 37 Lamplight Street for a house of worship to assemble, congregate, and other biblical studies. I'm not going to read the rest of this because we already did at the hearing last month. And this is a continuation of the public hearing that the board opened on, at the November 9th Planning Board meeting. So also, no motion is needed to continue the hearing tonight. If possible, I'd like the applicants to come up to the podium for a second and just, I know you submitted a letter dated November 20th with comments directed toward responding to Mr. Robert Palace Jr., the maintenance supervisor of the adjacent Rombaut Village. So I wonder if you could just very, very briefly, I know that there wasn't really any substance, per se, in the letter, but if you want to just reiterate to the board what you said in the letter, that would be helpful.
We intend to work with Rombaut Village to find out basically what the cause of their flooding issues are, if it's actually related to our parking lot and drainage, or if it's some other issue, and then work with them to find a resolution that fits both of us.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, I'm going to ask to see a show of hands from the audience to see if anyone wishes to speak at tonight's continuation of the hearing. If there are, I'll read the rules of conduct for public hearings, but if not, I won't. All right.
There's nobody at all on this.
No one at, that's funny, I see these fuzzy images of people over, oh, no, I'm sorry. That's just, I didn't really eat dinner tonight, so I guess that has to do something with it. All right. Then we will forego with reading the rules of conduct. And I'll just give this another second or two to see if anyone else comes in, to see if anyone wants to speak to this public hearing tonight. And meanwhile, I'll ask, if nobody does show up, would it be appropriate to close this public hearing tonight? I'll ask our attorney and engineer for their opinion.
Absolutely.
I thought so. All right. So we're not going to wait any longer. Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing tonight? Brad moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the public hearing is closed by a vote of seven to zero. And we'll continue this discussion in a few minutes, a little bit later, under Project Reviews.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a new submittal. This is the O'Connell Lot Line Revision. So we have our alternate member, Kevin O'Connell, who is also a voting member tonight, being the applicant for, or one of the applicants for this proposal. So it would be appropriate to recuse yourself. Thank you. So the applicant seek lot line realignment approval to revise the lot line between Lot 1, consisting of 1.07 acres located at 220 Terrace Ridge in the R40 zoning district, and Lot 2, consisting of 45.74 acres located at Mauer Brook Drive in the R40 zoning district. This lot line realignment will result in Lot 1, consisting of 1.89 acres, and Lot 2, consisting of 44.92 acres. The lot line realignment is submitted pursuant to Town Official Code Chapters 13246, Sections 13246 and 13247, and has been referred to the Town Engineer, Town Planning Board Attorney, and the Town Building Inspector/Zoning Administrator for their review and comment. And should there be any members of the public here tonight who would like to make informal comments on this, we will allow that after discussion of the application. So, welcome, Mr. Burns.
Good evening.
So if you would like to briefly explain the proposal?
The proposal is to enlarge a lot in the, in the Mauer Brook subdivision. Mr. O'Connell's lot with a piece of property to the rear of it, which is, to the rear inside of it, which is a piece of an undeveloped, currently undeveloped residential portion of land that is, is actually rather large in size. It's 45 and a half, 45 and three-quarter acres. The area up there is, has municipal water and individual septics. But there's, there's no effect on any, any sewage disposal systems with the lot line realignment. There's really no effect on any infrastructure. It's basically just making one lot a little bit smaller and enlarging a, almost twice the size, actually, in a, in the one acre zoning there. The, if you guys are familiar with the location, I'm not, Terrace Drive is actually, it's actually located at the intersection of Terrace View and Mauer Brook Drive. The, the rear parcel that, the larger parcel is actually fed by a 50-foot strip along Terrace View that extends, forming kind of a T-intersection with Mauer Brook.
Good. All right. There is no CPL memo, but I did want to ask John Bodendorf just to comment on whether you've had a chance to take a look at the plat and whether you have any observations on the proposed plat, the technical requirements, whether everything looks okay.
Yeah. Like Mr. Burns said, this is simply a transfer of vacant land from a large parcel to a developed parcel. It doesn't impact any utilities. It doesn't impact any setbacks. It's pretty straightforward and conforms to the code. So we did not generate a memo since we didn't have anything worth commenting on.
All right. And I'll also ask our attorney, Dominic Cordisco, to just comment briefly on whether the proposed application meets the legal requirements in the code section for the revised lot line approvals.
Yes, I believe that it does. And procedurally, like the board handled last month, the 228 Osborne application, the board may wish to consider waiving public hearing and authorizing the preparation of a resolution for consideration at next month's meeting.
All right. And, well, I'll ask the board members if there are any questions before we go further.
Any particular reasons being done, just to make one more logic?
I think that, you know, the, the O'Connells have lived there for an extended period of time since the house was actually built, and they've kind of creeped a little bit, and they just, you know, they'd like to have a little bit of an extra space around them as a, as a buffer as well. You know, it's, right now, it's, they've had woods behind them. It opens up into, into sharp reservation, actually, the, or not sharp, sorry. Stony hill in the back. So it's, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of vacant wilderness back there.
Make sure it's not being done at a necessity.
No.
There's nothing built on.
No, they're not planning on building anything. It's, you know, it's strictly to, so that they have a little bit more.
All right. Any other questions at this time?
No, that was my question, so we got that out of the way.
All right. Well, as with similar revised lot line applications, the board has looked at lately, this looks like it would be a type-two action under Seeker as a lot line adjustment. Dominic, if you concur with that?
Correct.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to classify the proposed O'Connell revised lot line approval as a type-two action pursuant to Seeker? Jody moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is one abstention as Mr. O'Connell is abstaining. So that is a vote of six, zero opposed, and one abstention. And as Mr. Cordisco was mentioning, would someone like to make a motion to waive a public hearing for the O'Connell revised lot line approval? All right, Brad moves it.
I'd second it.
All right, Brad, he seconds that. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes six, zero, and one abstention. So I'll ask if there is anyone in the audience at this time who would like to make informal comments regarding this proposal. And seeing no hands raised, we will move on. So one additional thing, since this is supposed to be an expedited review, under the town code provisions, would someone like to make a motion to authorize our attorney to prepare a draft resolution of conditional final approval for the proposed O'Connell revised lot line with the required conditions for the board's review and consideration at the January 11th Planning Board meeting?
Some move.
I think Bob moved it. Brad, do you want to second it?
I'd second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. That passes six to zero with one abstention. So I think that's it for tonight, unless you have any other questions for us?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Project Reviews. We are back to the Star of Bethlehem Baptist Church Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, Board to Review Submission Made by the Applicants Representative on November 28, 2023. Welcome back to the podium, gentlemen.
Seems like we were just here.
It seems like a long time, doesn't it? So I'd, I'd like to also ask you to just briefly reiterate what was in your, your other letter, which included responses to the County General Municipal Law Referral Response Letter. So if you can do that, that would be appreciated.
Dear Planning Board members, this letter is in response to comments provided by the County of Dutch's Department of Planning and Development. Is that the one we're giving reference to?
Yep, yep. Yes, thanks.
The comments pertaining to sign is indicating that existing parking signs will be revised or replaced is correct only to confirm adherence to current zoning code and code requirements. The additional external sign requested will be accompanied by the submission of an approved sign permit application. A rendering of the sign to be placed on the existing structure identified on the site plan as a brick sign base, which is located at the entrance of the property, is attached for your review. It has been noted that the existing exterior parking pole lights are no longer in compliance with the current town code. We have begun the process of obtaining alternative environmentally sustainable options to include ambient and color temperature suggestions outlined within the comments.
So we've looked at some, either solar lights or putting the caps on the existing lights that would convert them into downward lighting?
We were told that the existing poles were obtained from the Cold Spring Train Station. So I don't know at this point how they can be utilized further, or whether they would have to be replaced in its entirety before we try to increase or decrease the color temperature in the ambient lighting on that parking lot.
Right. Well, I think generally, the Planning Board's approach has been where there are really no real physical improvements to the site. And I'll speak for the Planning Board, and others can, can weigh in on this, but I don't think we would go about requiring that all the existing fixtures would be, you know, would have to be replaced. That would usually be considered kind of an overly burdensome requirement. And actually, I've seen the site recently, and as long as they're in good working condition, you know, they actually look kind of nice. They're kind of an old character that goes well with the area. So I personally would not want to see them replaced. But I think anything that could be done to, you know, add some shielding of some sort that might focus the, the light downward instead of spilling out off of the site, that would, that would be a good thing to do.
Good note.
I won't ask Mr. Bodendorf to summarize his memo because basically it just says you have no further comments on this application. But just, unless you can think of anything else, we should cover, that, that should do it in the letter.
No, I, I like the fact that they stated that they're going to work with the, the neighbors to figure out what may be causing some of the flooding down there. And I would imagine any proposed solution would be brought to the Building Department if, if necessary. So I think that, that's a good response to that particular comment.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
I guess only about the sign. We had the PDF of the sign and the colors.
Right.
Wasn't very clear, vibrant, in terms of what this sign may actually look like. Seemed okay from what I could gauge, but the print wasn't very good.
So it's, just at the top, it says, "You're welcome here." And it'll have our logo in the front. I can see the, in the middle, which is a star. And it'll just have our service times and a QR code that people can scan to basically get more information. That's, it's not going to be a whole lot on it. We didn't want a whole lot on it. Yeah, we just didn't, we didn't want a whole lot on it.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be part of this application, is part of what we would be reviewing, correct?
Yeah, signs normally would be part of what the Planning Board reviews and approves during a site plan. Well, my, my copy came out pretty clearly. There, of course, there are no dimensions or anything on it. Is this basically retrofitting any existing sign structure that's out there?
Yes, it's just what's going to go on the existing sign.
Well, I guess we probably could put something in our resolution of approval that we'll talk about in a second, saying that basically any sign would need to comply with town codes and would have to go through the required sign permit process through the Building Department.
Yeah, I mean, not to be nitpicky, I guess, just usually we, we look, we ask for samples, you know, exactly what color the letter, I mean, we have, you know, it looks like black lettering, the star looks, I, I can't, you know, maroon maybe, I don't know.
It's a gold.
Gold.
Okay. And, and black lettering, yeah. Nothing fancy, nothing over the top. We didn't want to be too.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it, I guess, just for documentation purposes of what we're approving.
Well, we could also include something in the resolution, perhaps, that more specific sign details be provided prior to the site plan being signed by the Planning Board Chair.
Yeah, I think that, yeah.
Does that sound reasonable, Dominic?
It, it does, as long as the applicant's able to comply with that.
What does, what exactly are you looking to see?
Well, yeah, certainly dimensions.
Small sample board with the colors, what it's going to be and finishes?
Right, materials, colors. I mean, most, yeah, most of the materials are on the existing structure, but normally, it would be colors, materials, size. So it would really just be a matter of putting dimensions on, on a drawing like this, and then having more specific listing of, you know, well, showing the colors a little bit more clearly because, as Anthony said, they're, you know, they're not perfectly clear what the colors would be. So like a color palette indication and what the materials would consist of. Pretty simple. All right. Any other questions or comments?
No.
So this was classified as a type-two action at the October 12th meeting. So I guess I would just ask the board if we're ready to authorize our attorney to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final site development plan approval and special permit, use permit for the proposed Star of Bethlehem Baptist Church at 37 Lamplight Street for the board's review and consideration at the January, January 11th Planning Board meeting. And whether that sounds reasonable to consultants?
I believe so.
Of course.
Yeah. Some move.
All right, Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Brad seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And so that is a vote of passing that seven to zero. And so we'll see you next month for the resolution.
Just for, if I may, just to be clear, this is for both preliminary and conditional final?
Yes.
Yes, correct. Okay.
Right.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is TL Holdings of New York LLC, three lot subdivision, Board to Review and Consider a Draft Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Subdivision Reapproval. Welcome. I think we'll just ask our attorney, Dominic Cordisco, to summarize the draft resolution and see if there are any questions from board members after that.
Yes, so we circulated draft, draft number three dated December 6th. And this is a resolution of. resolution of preliminary and conditional final subdivision reapproval. So it is a reapproval of a previously granted approval for this particular project. There are no changes in any of the conditions and it's fairly straightforward. I would encourage the board to consider adoption of the draft as presented.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
All right, any questions from you, John?
No.
All right. And have you had a chance, as the applicant, to look through the draft resolution? If you have any questions or comments on it?
No, I think it's all the same as it was when we first approved. Just, like you said, had to wait for the powers that be to sign off in their departments. That's why it took so long.
Exactly. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary and conditional final subdivision reapproval for TL Holdings of New York LLC, three lot subdivision, as reviewed tonight, and authorize the chair to sign it?
So move.
Ooh, that was a simultaneous. I think, I think Robbie's voice I heard first because he's closer to me and then Bob seconded it, right? Is that how it worked?
I only heard Bob, so.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that resolution passes seven to zero. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I think we're all set on that. Okay. The next item on the agenda is SK LJ Inc., Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Board to review and consider a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Welcome back, Mr. Burns.
Good evening.
I just wanted to mention before we get started that we did receive the Dutchess County General Municipal Referral Response, received it on November 20th. So we hadn't had a chance to look at it or discuss it before, you know, at the last meeting, is what I mean to say. So a couple of items stood out to me that the county raised. One is under landscaping. The county points out that the trees proposed along the north property line are only three feet tall at planting and that larger trees would be more useful for screening. That refers to the arboridae at the outer side of the proposed fence. And then, secondly, under use of the property, the county points out that storage of junk cars or car parts is not allowed in the general business district as per town code and that the town should ensure that any junk cars or car parts are removed as part of this development. So I thought those were really good points and I'd like to suggest that as we go through the draft resolution, that the board think about how we might be able to address those things through some additional conditions that might be added to the resolution. And so with that in mind, I'll ask Mr. Cordisco to summarize the draft resolution. And again, as we're going through it, maybe we can think about those items that maybe could have some additional conditions in there.
Okay. What you should have in front of you is a draft number three dated December 8th. It's a resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the SK LJ Inc. Proposed Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit for the project that's been pending before the board. I'll skip ahead to the conditions of the approval. The conditions are, they include outside agency approvals, including the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health and anything else that's identified in EAF for the project. There is a performance bond required for the project. There's a maintenance bond of $18,550 required for the project. There's an inspection fee of $2,500 required. There's the standard notes regarding the final plan revisions as well as payment of all fees. Landscaping has to be constructed according to the plan. There has been no signage details submitted, so any signage would have to comply with the Town of Fishkill Sign Code. There's also a condition regarding a limitation on amenities and accessory structures, basically only that can be constructed, is that what's shown on the plan. The board previously adopted a negative declaration on November 9th, 2023. Any conditions as mitigation measures identified in that negative declaration are also conditions of the approval.
Thank you very much. So first, I'll just ask the board if there are any questions or comments on the draft that Dominic submitted. And then I'll go through a couple of suggested additions for possible conditions. Any questions?
No, no comments on what's in here already.
Okay. Well, here are my suggestions. On page six, I would suggest adding a new condition number nine, which would go basically in place in, before the current number nine. And then subsequent numbering would have to change accordingly. But the new condition number nine would read as follows. The landscaping plan and schedule on sheet two of three shall be revised to show the proposed 21 arboridae to be at a planting height of five to six feet tall. Said revised landscaping plan and schedule shall be submitted to the town planning office prior to the signing by the planning board chair of any final site development plan drawings. So I can go over that again, but let me approach the other, the second one. Also on page six, add a new condition number 14 after the current condition number 12 to be renumbered. So all the renumbering would have to occur.
Say that again, John? I'm sorry.
Well, I'll repeat it. I'll repeat it all. But we'd add a new condition number 14 after the current condition number 12. So all of them are going to be renumbered to read as follows. A note shall be added to the mixed-use site plan on sheet one of three stating that storage of junk cars or car parts is not permitted in the general business district as per Town of Fishkill Code. All such junk cars or car parts shall be removed from the site in conjunction with the mixed-use development. Said revised sheet one of three shall be submitted to the town planning office prior to the signing by the planning board chair of any final site development plan drawings. And then actually going along with those two, there would be a minor revision in the boldface lettering on page seven where it's talking about the submittal of the final site plans prior to the planning board signing them. And right now, it's referring to condition numbers one through seven under the current draft resolution. If we go along with the new conditions I mentioned, those condition numbers would now refer to one through seven, nine, and 14. So that's a lot to digest. So I can either, I can go back over them, but also just see what the board thinks about adding those as conditions. I think on the plantings, three-foot-high plantings of evergreens is generally considered to be a very small, small tree, especially for screening purposes. Now, understandably, these would be going on the outside part of the fence, which is also providing some screening. But, you know, I think it would be more appropriate for plantings in the range of five to six feet instead of three feet in this case.
Arborvites are very fast growing.
I understand that. Also, I did note that they are the type of arboridae that are supposed to be more resistant to deer. So that's a good thing, but...
But they're proposing a fence and the trees.
Yes.
Yes.
And the fence is how high?
Six foot.
Six feet, yeah.
Honestly, the fence is six foot high. We're, I don't know. I don't, I don't really see the, I understand the comment from the county.
I mean, the expense is quite a bit, too, when you look at what the difference between a three-foot and a six-foot.
If there was no fence, I would agree with the need for a higher tree, but...
And I'm also concerned about getting close to the road with those trees.
It's not close to the road. This is up at the northern end of the property.
The north, the north property line.
Right. It's basically just adjacent to a residential property. Yeah, so it's not affecting the road at all.
What kind of fence were they going to put up?
Wooden stockade fence.
Yeah, if you'd like to, if you'd like to speak, come up to the microphone.
The fence is...
Come a little closer.
Thank you. The fence is higher. The trees are more for, you know, for, to make it more pleasant looking at the, from the bottom of the fence to the bottom of the property. So the tree is never going to be higher than the fence. The tree is...
Oh, they'll get, yeah, they'll get higher eventually.
I mean, either way, but it's more, the fence is already there. It's just more for decoration for the bottom part.
Well, I still think it would be appropriate to raise the planting height. We've heard from one member who doesn't think it's a good idea, but I would like to hear from everybody else.
Were you planning on doing anything before this?
Excuse me?
Were you planning on putting any vegetation before?
Yeah, that's shown on the site plan.
Yeah, no, there's, there's, I show, I show, I think, between three and four-foot tall arboridae with a, with a six-foot fence. The arboridae are on the side of the fence to the, to the residential mixed-use, the residential multifamily parcel to the north.
Actually, the planting schedule or the landscaping schedule, as you call it, showed them as three-foot.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is basically just, it's already shown on the plan that the board is considering approving. But I hadn't really noticed the size until it was raised by the county and I'm glad they did because I think it's a, it's a very good comment. I think it would, it would actually help, you know, kind of blend the fence facing the resident on that side with the, and what's on the other side of the fence with the development. Eventually, the trees will get taller than the fence and will, you know, help further screening of the site.
Would you be planting it on your property?
Yes.
That particular type of tree grows extremely fast. We planted it between our neighbors and us only a few years ago, and they have tripled in size. So I don't understand if there's already a fence there, what the big deal is. But I don't work for the county. And I, I do see her point of making it aesthetically pleasing to look at.
Just breaks it up some.
Exactly.
The screen, the actual screening is being provided by the fencing at this point.
Correct.
And then it'll be supplemented by the, by the plantings, which will eventually probably overcome the fence and be the, be the majority screen rate.
Like to hear from this side. Anyone have any other thoughts?
Well, certainly, the plantings of four or five foot would be, would hide the fence rather quickly as opposed to waiting three or four years for the arboridae to hide the fence. So depending on the type of fence that it is, it might be more pleasing for the neighbors to see the four to five-foot arbres as opposed to the three-foot. But arbres do grow very fast.
Bob?
I'm just, you know, checking out. It's a three, I'm just going to ask a real limited question, but it's just because it's the cost of the three-foot compared to buying a six-foot?
The cost of, the cost of the purchase, the cost of installation, the, you know, everything is more expensive when you go with the, when you go with the larger tree. And what is the, what's the benefit of a, of a larger tree? I mean, at this point, we have six-foot, a six-foot fence for screening. We're screening, screening.
No, you're designing, you're designing a nicer development, in my opinion. Do you have any idea of the cost differential, as I think Kevin's question was, between a three-foot arboridae versus a...
Off the top of my head, I do not know the cost differential, but it's probably triple the price.
At least double, yeah. But they grow pretty fast.
There, some of what I read, they'll grow two to three feet a year.
Depending on if they're in the right location, faster. I will take pictures and bring them, I'm not even kidding how fast these things grow. They're crazy.
All right, let's go to the second suggestion and then we'll come back to the overall possibility of revising the resolution. So the second one, again, has to do with the, the storage of junk cars on the site. I can read it again, but if, unless you, if they're just...
It refers to the town code, right? It refers to...
Yes.
Yeah, my view on that one is, is it possible to change cars to motorized vehicles? The reason I bring that up is because in the past, we've had a discussion regarding boats and boat storage in that particular location. And you could have cars, boats, extra train vehicles, right? I mean, anything like that, that could, over time, just kind of turn out junky if it's left there. So motorized vehicles might be a better way to go.
I, I was thinking the same thing. The only reason I've put the wording is, is because it's reflecting what the actual wording in the code is. There's a whole definition of junkyards, which actually gets into some of this, but they, they talk mainly about storage of junked cars or car parts. I mean, I think we probably would be on safe grounds as a condition in our own resolution, referring to motorized vehicles. So I think if Dominic thinks that's okay on that condition, we could probably change the wording of it.
Yes, sir.
I'm in agreement on this one.
Can that be something like unregistered motorized vehicles?
Well, the term junk cars and junkyards has a definition, which I'll read to you from the town code in the definition section. A junkyard is an area of land with or without buildings used for the storage outside of a completely enclosed building of used and discarded materials, including but not limited to wastepaper, rags, metal, et cetera, et cetera. Actually, here it talks about unlicensed vehicles or parts thereof. Okay, that's good. Then it goes on to say, "The deposit or open storage on a lot of two or more wrecked or broken vehicles or currently unlicensed vehicles or the major parts of two or more vehicles shall be deemed to make the lot a junkyard." And then there's another part of the code, which is the Schedule of Regulations, which specifically says there should be no storage of junk cars or car parts within the general business owning district. So it's a little bit complicated and I was trying to make the condition wording as uncomplicated as I could.
Jonathan, I thought when they first came in, the application was going to say that they were, the owner was restoring antique cars.
That's what, that's what's gonna go inside the garage.
Only gonna be inside.
There's gonna be no storage of junk cars on the property.
Well, I, I'm trying to get what's between a junk car and an antique car.
Well, that's, that's, that's where the license thing comes in. But, you know, something that doesn't have a license plate on it, isn't registered, is, is junk. Something that can go down the road and is a registered motor, or registered vehicle, or whatever it is, is not.
I concur with that.
So, so we could have the wording of that one being that a note shall be added to the mixed-use site plan on Sheet 1 of 3 stating that storage of junked motorized vehicles...
Do you want to say junk more, please?
Well, the word junk, I think, has to be in there because that's basically how the, the code refers to it, and then they define what that means. Because if you just say storage of cars, then you're dealing with probably another thing as a used car lot, which is not part of this approval. So, I don't know. I mean, how complicated do we want to get?
I mean, if they wanted to use the property for any other use, technically, they have to come back to the planning board to have an amended site plan.
The cars that, the cars that are currently on the property are all owned, my husband collects cars, so they're all owned by my husband, and he, you know, he fixes them. He puts some of them on the road, he alternates them, so it's, it's, they're not junk cars or...
Well, by the definition of the code, they're considered junked cars.
But like we said earlier, a lot of that stuff, once the building is built, will be moved into the, that's the purpose of the bill.
Yeah, so that's the part, the point of this condition, is so that they will not be stored outside. So, I don't know, Dominic, do you want to weigh in with some proposed wording on this? I'll read what I had. So modifying the cars to motorized vehicles, I think, is good, but it was gonna say, "A note shall be added to the mixed-use site plan on Sheet 1 of 3 stating that storage of junked motorized vehicles or parts is not permitted in the general business district. As per Town Official Code, all such junked motorized vehicles or parts shall be removed from the site in conjunction with this mixed-use development." And then indicating that the revised Sheet 1 of 3 shall be submitted to the Town Planning Office prior to the signing by the Planning Board Chair.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that a reiteration of existing town code?
It's, the part about removing the vehicles is in addition to that.
Understood.
That was really just kind of referencing why we were adding that condition. Unless you could think of another way to phrase it.
Well, shouldn't it also specify that it's outside storage, not just, because if you just say stores, then what's the point of it?
Yeah. Good point.
And wouldn't, if it said they had to be insured and registered, wouldn't that fix the problem? Because who's gonna spend the money to insure and register a vehicle if it's just crap?
Yeah, no, that's, that's the point of this condition, is that if they're not gonna be, if they're not gonna be registered with license plates, they will be in violation of the code, and we, as the planning board, are pointing that out, that those, if they remain in that condition, they will have to be removed from the site or put indoors for the fixing of them. That's really the gist of the condition.
Excuse me, Kevin. Talk to my pen.
Does that make sense?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, I'm pretty sure if we take a ride around the town, we're gonna find people who don't have registered and insured vehicles on their property.
Yeah, yeah.
I can think of three right off the top of my head.
Yeah, the point is, though, this is, this is a development proposal before the planning board, and we obviously aren't gonna drive around, and we aren't the code enforcement officer, and I'm sure Joe does not have the time or the ability to drive around and find all the junk cars on places. But since this one is before us, and it's been noted by the county, I think it would probably be a good idea to have this as a condition.
Make it so.
Make it so.
Well, we, we will make it so by amending the resolution and then voting on it.
That's so funny.
Right, Fred? All right, we're wasting enough time on this. Let's, let's move forward with, it sounds like that one condition should be added. The other condition, I will probably vote either to abstain or vote against the resolution without the larger trees planted, but so be it with the rest of the board wanting, sounding like you don't want that condition in there.
Can I just make a comment on the potential condition with the, the larger trees? That would impact the performance bond amount that was given to us and the maintenance bond, so if, if that's gonna be a requirement, I'm assuming they would have to then provide a revised calculation for, for those amounts?
Sounds like that's not an issue, though, because the board, pretty much, except for me, wasn't...
I, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, yeah. To me, that wouldn't be a reason not to do it, but I'm a minority in this situation. So as I said, we've spent way more than enough time on this, so why don't we move ahead with that wording of the one condition on the junk motorized vehicles? Are we agree that we can add that to the resolution as a new, now the numbering system...
It'll be number thirteen.
Will be number thirteen? Okay.
And then all subsequent numbered items in the resolution would increase by one?
Right, after thirteen, right.
That would leave us with seventeen conditions.
Correct.
And then the paragraph after would say conditions one through seven, and then thirteen.
And thirteen. All right, and so with the addition of that condition, number thirteen, and Debbie, I can provide you with the wording of it.
I can get it right off the video. You don't have to do that if you don't want to.
Okay.
It's up, you can compare it when you come in.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
So are we okay with that amended resolution in terms of moving ahead with a motion and a vote on it?
Yes.
All right, any further questions or comments?
No.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the amended resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval site development plan and special use permit for SKLJ Inc. as reviewed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
So moved.
I think Kevin moved it, so Joe, do we do like to second it?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Aye, abstain. All right, so that passes six, zero, with one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is 228 Osborne Hill Road and 9 Bergarth Drive, lot line realignment. Board to review and consider a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval, lot line realignment. Welcome. So we'll ask Dominic Cordisco to summarize this draft resolution for the lot line realignment.
Can I just say something? I think you two are the epitome of neighborly, small people. You come in, you wanna do this nicety, and really, this is what Fish Hill is about, honestly. So honestly, I commend you, and thank you.
Sure. I'm glad you have the process that allows us to do this.
I am, too.
All right, Dominic.
Well, you know, it's hard to follow that, you know?
It's a make-up show.
And, and I, you know, it's not a legal matter, but as a personal matter, I agree wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Especially when you realize that this lot line alignment, you know, is going to result in a transfer of a net total of twelve square feet between the properties. It's really quite remarkable. You know, it's very straightforward.
Got the lines exactly right. It was close.
Yes, and, and so this resolution is, is, is very straightforward. It has standard conditions that apply to all lot line realignment resolutions. And that is, final plans, obviously, have to include the planning board's signature block. They have to be signed by the owners before they're signed by the planning board chair. There's also deeds that have to be submitted because in order, it's, I'm sure you understand, but it's not just filing the subdivision plat with the county that effectuates the transfer of ownership. And so there's really, there's two sets of deeds. There's deeds that travel between the two of you, and then there's deeds as well where you consolidate the new area into your existing holdings. And so drafts of those deeds with the languages included in this resolution, and that's pretty much it. It's very straightforward application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, other comments from board members?
Jody said it.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the lot line realignment at twenty, 228 Osborne Hill Road and 9 Bergarth Drive as reviewed tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
So moved.
I thought Jody might move that. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Fred seconded it. Any further discussion? And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero, and we do appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming tonight. All right. And now, we have basis industrial Route 9D, site development plan, and special use permit for to review submission made by the applicant's representative on November 29th, 2023, and to consider declaring itself a lead agency. Welcome back, Mr. Allison Rotos.
Nice to see you guys. It's been two months. We had a month off, so you guys didn't have to see me and hear my voice and all that, but we are back, so...
And we appreciate you, too.
You know, it's almost the end of the year now. It's, it was my Christmas gift to you guys. I want to offer it, so...
We appreciate it.
Let me just pull up, we have, is this, okay, this is one of the things. All right, I'll let me zoom in here for you guys. All right, so, good evening, board members. Nice to see you all again. George Ellison-Ratos from Keenan Bean. On behalf of the applicant, with me today, I have Jackie Giordano from Dynamic Engineering, Corey Chase from Dynamic Traffic, and Marino Velardi from SGW Architecture. So from the last time we were here, we've made some changes again, but more importantly, we, we were able to get the documents to the town for circulation. So they were circulated to the county. The county responded with certain comments. That was on November 16th, 2023. You know, the thirty days has passed for the notice of intent, circulation, so that, that's a good thing that we had happen since then. And then we made some revisions, right? Some of the things we've done, made some corrections to the EAF in response to some comments from CPL and from Liz. We have provided an exhibit, a site plan exhibit to DOT just to sort of get their, their taste on something, because I know sidewalks are a big thing. So we've also provided that exhibit for you guys, and it's a potential alternative with an asset risk. We don't know what DOT's input's gonna be, but the sidewalk's sort of coming into that DOT right-of-way, so we can walk you through that today if you have any questions on that as well. We've addressed, to the best of our understanding right now, the buffer that's required at the back of the GB portion, where the GB becomes the, the R-15 portion. We've clarified property boundaries. We added a bicycle rack by the fast food. And then we've also done some architectural things, right? We've changed some colors. We adjusted some wall dimensions. So we think that helps as well, and I could pull those up as well. And then with the fast food, the only thing we wanted to point out and clarify, and I think it was in response to a CPL comment, that's a prototype right now, right? So what's there, what, when the tenant is, you know, secured, there might be some minor changes. Obviously, we would come back to the board at that point, but right now, that's the general idea of what the fast food is gonna be in accordance with the Town of Fish Hill's zoning code. So those are the changes, and from what I understand, we're here tonight to discuss that. There's a couple memos that we could go through as, you know, par for course, and we can answer any questions you guys have?
Yeah, I think we'd be interested in hearing all of those things that you would like to delve into a little bit further. In particular, I don't know if you want to start with the, the sidewalk extension out into the right-of-way, but that's, that's one I'm particularly interested in hearing more about.
Yeah, so let me just pull that up right here. So this is the, this was provided to you guys as a standalone document. It's called Site Plan Exhibit. And what the change is, is right up here, and I could actually zoom into the overall site plan as well so that you guys can sort of see a one-to-one comparison. So, and again, with the caveat that this is being provided to DOT for their input, right, because it is into the DOT right-of-way. But for full transparency, we have the sidewalk, obviously, come all the way up to the entrance on the site plan that's been submitted to the town as it is right now. The, the exhibit that's been circulated with DOT, sidewalk continues a little more, and what it is, is this curbing at the gas station comes into the right-of-way a little bit. So that allows for a sidewalk to be provided here. And the other thing it does is it shortens this entrance, or the exit, rather, from the gas station. So it's narrower. Here is fifteen feet proposed, whereas on this, it's, I'm not exactly sure how wide it is, but obviously, you could tell just by looking at it, it has gotten narrower. Now, the impacts of that kind of, you know, shifting and everything, we can have Corey speak to, but that's just a very general overview on...
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and thanks for the introduction of that. And what, what it also allows us to do is, you can see, it creates a greater separation between the edge of the travelway and the existing circulation area within the gas station. So I know it was a point of discussion in some of the earlier hearings, but what that allows us to do is actually channelize this driveway more because now there's actually a throat length there, so it allows us to, to actually construct it in angular fashion to really reinforce the fact that it's right-turn egress only at that driveway. So, you know, really multiple benefits. It, it creates the extension of the sidewalk along the entire site frontage, which I know was a point of discussion earlier as well, but it really also allows us to provide true channelization of this driveway and really angle it. You know, we'll adjust the striping and things like that internally so that the, the stop line and the arrow and things are also angular. But really, we just wanted to present this to the board, you know, to get your initial feedback. As was mentioned, we did submit the initial proposal review to NYSDOT for review. We followed it up with this exhibit as well, just based on our last hearing, so we could get their feedback on it in addition to the towns.
Could I just ask, from your experience in other areas and dealing with DOT, have they tended to allow this kind of infringement into their right-of-way when it's something that's, well, I mean, it's part of a complete streets approach to the roadway, so it's for pedestrian safety, but just what is your experience with those types of things?
Generally, when it comes as a request on behalf of the municipality, they're much more in favor of allowing us to, to make that encroachment. And we're not reducing the actual travel lane. Again, it's just, you know, the... Again, it's just, you know, the paved shoulder area. So, you know, we're not reducing the actual travel lane. It's just a curb adjustment. So allowing the sidewalk to be constructed, you know, it's my experience that they see that as more of a benefit in, you know, allowing that encroachment to occur.
Okay. Thanks for that. Yep. Do you want to get into some of the other things that you were mentioning?
Yeah, so let me pull up, I think, architecture, if we could speak on that too. Just to, you know, it's, like we said, we want to work with the town to make this the most beautiful project it can be, and the architecture obviously plays a role. So we have made some revisions to that as well that Marino could walk you guys through. Let me pull them up here.
Good afternoon, everyone. So we took a look at the comments, responded, and added some additional material additions to not only the storage facility, but the car wash and the fast food. Like George mentioned, the fast food building is currently a prototype. And when somebody else comes in, you know, we do anticipate that they'll have changes. For the car wash, we took note of the request for a more muted blue color. So we made this a royal blue rather than the lighter blue that we had previously. On the storage building, I don't believe there were any comments, and that, you know, that's stayed the same since. And then we also adjusted some of the wall lengths on the car wash buildings, so that no facade longer than, there is no facade longer than 50 feet without a break. Any questions?
Okay. I think we're good for now.
So those are some of the, there weren't, certainly fewer revisions this time around than all the previous times. So that's, I think, a good thing. I think we're working toward a collaborative approach on this to get something that we like. So those are really the big-ticket item, the big-ticket items, let's call them, from last time we were here. But, you know, we're more than willing to answer any questions you guys may have. Or I know, you know, typically, we go through the CPL memo, so we can start that. If you guys are ready, it's up to you how you want to approach it.
And I'll just note that we did receive this memo from Joel Petrus, the town's building inspector zoning administrator, talking about the basement and the storage building. So I think there will have some comments about that, and that is addressed also in the CPL memo. So maybe this would be a good time to ask Liz Exelson.
Before we do that, there was a traffic impact study. Do we want the, I'm not sure how we want to handle that. Do we want applicant to?
Do you want to have them describe the changes in it? Because it's, this is probably, what, the third or so version of it updated?
We can go with Liz and go from there.
Let's do that. So Liz, would you please give us a, I'll say, not a brief overview of CPL's memo, because I think this is the time where we really need to go through some of the detail in your memo, and so the board can actually have some, can sink our teeth into some of these issues.
Okay. That sounds good. I tried to, I realized that there was quite a bit of work done. We did have offline consultation, and I think that was pretty productive, and I see changes related to that. And we also have Dutchess County comments. Anyway, so I'm going to do this in themes. I know that the access and all that is always interesting, but I want to start first with the buffer. I think what's on the plan is probably partly the result of offline consultation. And so I took a look at that, because I think it's very important. And I do have a couple of specific comments about the buffer. I'm looking at my memo, page two, item 5A, little II. So there needs to be buffer behind the storage building and the car wash building. There's a lobe of land behind the fast food restaurant, so there's plenty of room there for landscaping. The, and I'm just going to, you know, you'll see it in my memo. There's kind of a thin strip between the edge of the road behind those two buildings. It ends up being, I guess, like six feet, maybe eight feet. And I can see that the landscape person has done their best to put as much as they could in there, not necessarily going over the line, kind of going into the grading area behind it. And so that's an improvement. So I did give some specific comments on page two. And then on page three at the bottom, so there is a detailed landscaping plan, generally works pretty well. But one of the issues is that the required buffering isn't as well-defined as I'd like it to be. And also importantly, the proposed development is defined by the line between the commercial zoning district and the residential district behind. And the concern is, how do we handle the fact that the buffer kind of dribbles into the residential? So I'm going to hope that our attorney can, you know, chime in as you see fit. I mean, ideally, if everything could be squeezed so that the buffer could be in the GB line, that would be one thing. Another possible approach is to set up some kind of, I don't know, a line that makes some of the R15 zoning part of this development site, because there are no lot lines there. But it would have to be defined by something like, I don't know, a deed restriction and easement, something, so that if and when the applicants come back later to develop the back part of the site, that that doesn't disappear or get squeezed or is replaced by some other improvement. So the buffer is intended to be a permanent thing. So I raise a number of comments about that in different parts of my memo.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I think, page six, item 16 covers all of that, what you're talking about in more detail.
Yep. That talks about the specifics and what I'm observing on the plans. So I think it's a step in the right direction, but it does need to be cleaned up. And I guess, when I look at the site, I can see that, you know, there is a squeeze to try to fit everything in that is desired by the applicant. But we have to somehow figure out what happens with that buffer. There's another issue that I did discuss with the traffic engineer, is that there's a 30-foot-deep accessway right in front of the storage center, which I assume has to do with the need for turnaround there and that. Because otherwise, all the other accessways internal to the site are 25 feet wide, allowing for two lanes. So that's another consideration for how that aspect might be tightened up. So that's the buffer issue, but I was happy to see some progress on that and keep working on it. The next sort of theme that I have here has to do with the traffic engineer's comments and DOT. One of the questions that the traffic engineer had is, well, was this sidewalk plan actually submitted to the DOT? And it sounds like something occurred. So we were asking in our memo that there be, that we get a copy of whatever, of course, the planning board, and we get a copy of whatever comments come from the DOT. Our traffic engineer had, was involved in some of the offline consultation and had some strong concerns. Right on the bottom of page one, this is pulled out of his set of comments at the end of the memo. He feels strongly that the central right-in, right-out driveway and the gas station right-out-only driveway should be considered for removal. So that's his strong recommendation about that. And so, again, I'm asking about DOT, whether we're going to get a response from them. And then moving on to page three. Let's see here. Nope. Sorry. I didn't see loading areas for all of the uses, so that has to be worked into the plans.
What was that? I'm sorry?
Loading spaces for each of the uses. That's a code requirement, but it also affects access. And.
See, I think there's a reference to that on page four.
Yep. Yep. And then the traffic engineers had some concerns. One, he's making a recommendation regarding the crash analysis, that information should be obtained from DOT, so that there's more crash data available to do the analysis. He had a lot of concerns of that the internal capture reductions were still provided in the traffic analysis. And so there has to be an aspect of the analysis that is without the internal capture. And I think what he's saying in his commentary is, we need the standard traffic analysis to be done, and if the applicant wants to include the capture analysis as sort of an additional analysis, that's fine. But he's made it very clear that he thinks it's not appropriate to do internal capture for this particular type of development. Let's see. And then he wasn't sure that DOT had been contacted. One of the things that wasn't in our memo, but that Jonathan and I discussed today, has to do with a crosswalk across Route 9D, but that is likely, I believe, to come out of the New York State DOT commentary. And then all the way through the memo, there are comments about things related to community character, gateway corridor, et cetera, et cetera, reinforcing the need for sidewalks. Dutchess County Department of Planning had some pretty strong recommendations about that, and I think, I'm urging the planning board to really have a good look at Dutchess County Planning Department's comments. Let's see. Everyone's aware, there's a gateway corridor, character of the area and the community is very important. And at some point, I think it'd be worth it for the planning board to comment on the revised architecture, again, on the community character and land use theme. And then there are some other zoning sections where I discuss on page four, defining and the project and refining the plan set to deal with a lot of different aspects of the development. We don't have any sign, any detailed sign plans yet, so we'll need to see those, because those are very important in the character of the area. And let's see. The lighting plan looks better and more detailed, but there are a lot of heavy-duty hotspots which should be eliminated. That's, you know, that's part of Town of Fishkill's code, and the county also pointed that out. I didn't actually go around the edges to see if you'd gotten rid of all those areas yet. I didn't go over that in detail. And then, let's see. And lastly, top of page two, I'm, you know, describing that we do have a determination from Joel Petrus. And I've put his central paragraph right in here, so that the board can see it. And it's helpful, but it also, you know, raises some questions to make sure that some of the assumptions that he has in here have to be addressed. So just by way of example, I noticed there were a couple of loading areas going into the building from the front of the self-storage building. I think they're, I don't know if they're at ground level or in the basement. What? They're at grade. Okay. So I know that, I think we have a ground-level first floor that's maybe 15 to 17 feet, a second story that's 13, 14 feet. We don't know what is the depth or height of the garage area and whether you have trucks going in there. So.
The basement area, you're saying?
Basement area.
The basement?
The basement.
Okay.
Sorry. Basement area is what I meant. So we, I mean, we don't have architectural plans yet, so we don't really know what that is. We just know that it's a basement level. We don't know if there are, and again, understanding that you have this interpretation, but the board will need detail on what's there for what's intended. And also, I guess I would say to address what Joel Petrus is saying. You know, I would think that the applicant would want to prove out that, so that, you know, the intention is, the applicant has a concern about having gross floor areas such that it might bounce you over a zoning requirement, but if it doesn't, if the basement doesn't count, then you don't have that concern. So then the planning board needs to know, well, what are the parameters of the basement level? And we don't know that. So that's, you know. Anyway, I probably have gone on too long, but I am very interested here what the board has to say about the architecture. And if you are familiar with the county's comments, how you feel about, in particular, the sidewalk issue and other issues the county mentions. So. Did I miss anything?
Well, let's see if there are any questions or comments, first of all, from board members, and then we can bounce around.
Liz, ours worthy for the DOT to tell us what's going to happen with the sidewalks and the ingress, egress, of what they were going to allow. I mean,
Right.
It's all up to them, basically.
Yep.
So I don't think we can even comment on it until they come back to us.
Is that an official, like, application to them?
It is. It's the first phase of the commercial law work from an application.
Great.
It's called the initial proposal review. So it is a formal first step in that process.
Great.
Have they given you any indication of timeframe as far as even an initial response from them, or just a sense of where the direction this is going?
I'd honestly hope to get a response by the meeting tonight, and unfortunately, we didn't get one. Now that we're at December 14th, I'm expecting it'll probably be the first part of January.
Of which year?
See, you know what dealing with DOT is like. But as Liz had mentioned, as soon as those comments come in, you know, we'll be happy to share them with her and for them on to the towns. You are all aware of what the comments are.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I understand totally that the fast food restaurant is a prototype. But I guess my question would be, what was it based on? Because I know certain franchise restaurants require a specific size building and a specific size parking area. And looking at your rendering, if I'm correct, if I wanted to pull in and have, let's say it hypothetically is a McDonald's, I have to park my car, then I have to walk across where people are going to be pulling in to go through the drive-through to get into the restaurant. And I am certain that for certain fast food places, that would not be an acceptable. And I am certain that for certain fast food places, that would not be an acceptable thing for them. They would not, they would not agree to that. So I'm just wondering, that building is a little on the small side. That's all I'm saying. So...
Yeah, so to...
What were you, is this a private area?
Uh, so to answer your questions, this building, both the size and the elevations were based off of the Wendy's. You know, we kind of threw something in there as a, you know, as a placeholder for now. This is their typical size, you know, there, there are larger ones, smaller ones. And then, yes, as you were saying, someone would park and have to cross the drive aisle, which, you know, in many places is, is the way it happens, just because of the drive-through and it going along the building. Yeah.
Okay. That was my question. I mean, I realize it's just a prototype and you can't really solidify anything, but...
Yeah. But definitely it was based on, you know, a legitimate franchise. It wasn't a mom and pop shop, uh, you know...
Just, it seems a little small, only because I'm somewhat familiar with that, and it just seemed a little small to me. That's all I'm saying.
Other questions or comments from board members?
Have we received a net cut fill volume for the site? I don't recall seeing it, but you guys have provided a lot of information to date?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, because I mean, with the storage facility having a basement, that's a lot of cut.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like, from what I could tell comparing existing to proposed elevations around the site, it's fairly close. But then you have the storage building, which makes me think it might be significant cut volume leaving the site, which, you know, seems, could potentially have some significance.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
And I would be very interested, when you do the basement, how you're going to get in and out, in the case of an emergency.
So, our typical basements are ten foot eight floor to floor, with exit stairs going straight to the exterior. And, you know, it's fire-rated, whatever, based on the, you know, the size of the building, the, you know, the amount of stories, the stairs penetrate. So the, from the basement, you'll have enough access to get out to the exterior wall and away from the fire.
Well, that reminds me one thing that was in the CPL memo, is on page seven, dealing with fire department.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to quickly mention that one, Liz? I think that's number twenty-six. Actually, it's under engineering, so that also maybe we can get some feedback from Mr. Bodendorf also.
Yeah, it's, the comment is, one hydrant was added, but the applicant should meet with the fire department and provide correspondence showing fire department approval of hydrant locations and emergency access. And I also, I didn't, I didn't know how tall a fire truck was, so I looked it up, and I don't know if it's accurate, but twelve feet tall.
That, I, I don't know.
Also, one of the soil profile pits that I saw with the SWIP report, I believe it was SPP-1, which is, I think is right behind where the storage facility would go, had shown groundwater seven point six feet below grade. Is that something that's, you know, if you've got a basement, that could be a concern in terms of, well, you need some pump down there, you know? I certainly wouldn't want to store something in a basement unit and, you know, and then there's also the, you know, what the displaced groundwater concern.
Uh, yeah, so typically if, I haven't taken a look at the exact grades for the site, but if we do encounter, you know, water at a, you know, a level that's, might be above where a basement would be, we'd flood-proof the, you know, the basement walls and use, you know, something like a grease waterproofing product to, you know, make the basement proof.
Yeah, I guess I would just, in, down the road, just maybe some more information on what that, because I was looking at the test logs and the borehole logs. Not every one showed groundwater, but a little concern about what is the true groundwater depth in that area.
So I'll...
Especially for that building. That one has a basement. The other ones, you know...
Yeah.
For the site in general, I think it's also important.
Mm-hmm. So I'll make a note of that, and we'll, we'll address it, obviously, to the best of the, our abilities for next, next time we're here.
And John, do you want to go through any of these other engineering detailed comments? There were a couple of things that I was interested in, talking about drainage area plans and water quality treatment in particular.
Yeah. A lot of these are carryovers. We have, there was a revised SWIP submitted. We did not get through that, that full review for this particular memo. So, some of those items may have been addressed. We'll, we'll need to, to finish our review and update those comments as, as needed. But, yeah, like I said, a lot of these are, are carryovers. They did address some of our previous comments. We're hoping that at some point, the, the board gets to a point where they can bless the layout, and then we'll get into a more detailed engineering review at that point.
I mean, to me, it's like we kind of need to hear from the DOT at this point. It's really going to drive this, this project one way or the other. Whether we bless it or not, the DOT could blow this thing in entirely different directions. So I kind of feel like we need to hear from them, because it's a very significant element of this project.
I think that's our traffic engineer...
Yeah, I mean, and I think Fred touched on it too, it's...
And, and especially regarding the, you know, sidewalks.
Well, and also the ingress and egress.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, if you can't get into the gas station easily, I don't know what's going to happen with, they're going to have to wait till the lease is up.
Exactly. And that's, thank you for bringing that up. I know that's what we discuss seemingly every month, obviously, the, the lease for the gas station. I don't know off the top of my head when it's up. So that's, that's a touchy issue in terms of how you address that, right? Whether we address it down the road, whatever the case is. Obviously, DOT also has its input on the, the potential sidewalks. I think, we hope that you guys are satisfied with the sidewalks that we've added thus far, right? We've made a lot of revisions, and we've tried to address those comments to the best extent feasible, right? The DOT exhibit is with an asterisk that has a, you know, a caveat to it. The exhibit that's submitted as part of the site plan set, that is what the town can look at and complies with the town and does not intrude on any right-of-ways or anything. So, that, for all intents and purposes, right now, is the current iteration. The, the site plan exhibit to DOT is like site plan B, potentially. And that's to address the comments and obviously to, to be better for the town. But in the meantime, obviously, what we submitted as part of the site plan set is the actual site plan that complies with the town code and has addressed the comments to the best extent possible.
Yeah, I know on the sidewalks, of course, as soon as I saw the exhibit, you know, my comment was, go ahead and put them on the plans.
Yeah, well...
You know, because, you know, I know that our comments have talked about them from the get-go. The comprehensive plan update talks about it. So...
Yeah, and, and it's...
Big yes.
It's to the, to the best extent feasible, right? I mean, we'd love to have sidewalks everywhere and, and work with the comprehensive plan. I think the issue with putting it on the actual plan is, until we have input from DOT, it's putting it in the site plan set, made, saying that's the current site plan, then maybe a month down the line, maybe two months down the line, we have to rip it out again because DOT said, you know, that's not happening. The current site plan set, the official site plan set, that can happen. That's feasible. That complies with the town, it's not intruding on anyone. And it's addressed the board's comments and CPL's comments and concerns and all that. Again, we're trying our best here, it's the best extent feasible. It, it just, you know, it, it sucks to be in a position where you sort of have to wait to hear a response from an outside agency or third party on that.
Yeah, but that is going to be really important. And, you know, I'll just reiterate that eastern site driveway in particular at the gas station, I appreciate that it's been redesigned and reduced in width, and it's now upshone as right turn only, out only egress. But I still believe that that eastern site driveway should be entirely eliminated, which is something that, that our traffic engineer at CPL has, has indicated. And unfortunately, we have to wait to hear from DOT about that whole thing. But it's a whole package there. It's like, it's not just the sidewalk, it's whether pedestrian safety in this area can be improved to the extent where people will feel comfortable and safe walking along that roadway, which would get them all the way to that Pappas Lane corner. And then, again, as Liz mentioned, with a marked pedestrian crosswalk across Route 9D, the safety of pedestrians would be really enhanced. So there's that. And now, you know, also, we've heard from a couple of sources that, that central accessway with the right in, right out only is also something that DOT may or may not approve. So I mean, that's something that I haven't even thought about, but if DOT is going to have problems with access on Route 9D, they're, they may require a whole package that, you know, we don't even know what it's, exactly it's going to be yet. So, yeah, and I was, I was going to reiterate some of the things that Liz Axelson brought up with the buffer. Really not clear to me whether a buffer for a development can extend on to an adjacent site, in the sense that it's outside of the general business zone. So, I mean, I'd, I'd like to get some feedback perhaps from our attorney on that, and something to, to, you know, really address, because that, it just shows that the site is kind of stacked up with uses in there which maybe are pressing the limits of that site.
And if I can speak on that...
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so with the buffer, this is a unique situation, inasmuch as, you know, typically, look, the intent of the buffer, which makes sense, is if you have a commercial property and then right next door you have houses, you want to have a buffer. This property is all under common ownership, right? There are some out parcels, obviously, that we keep mentioning, and you guys are tired of me hearing, oh, the out parcels are not controlled, then we have to figure out what's going on. But, this is a property that's in common ownership. It just happens to be split zone. So the intent of the buffer doesn't necessarily apply here, and to the extent that it does, there already is existing a, a buffer back here, right? All the homes and the residential uses are sort of back here. So there is a buffer here. There are trees already. It's, it's, it's not, you know, you don't have a, a brand-new home ten feet away from the storage or ten feet away from the drive aisle. The issue that we're having is, you can't fit twenty feet of buffer on the GB portion, which would be required if it was two separate owners, but because it's common ownership, the de facto effect of it is, even if you go into the R-15 to provide that buffer, which again, there currently is a buffer, you are providing that buffer. That is the intent of the code. The code also allows the planning board to say, well, you know what, you don't need a vegetative buffer, you could put a wall or a fence. Or, you know what, there's existing topographic conditions there that don't require a buffer, require a ten-foot buffer, or a six-foot buffer, whatever the case is. So, while we are trying our best and definitely want to address the buffer, this is a bit of a unique situation, because it is common ownership, and there is space, there, there is a gap there already. So, it puts us in a tough position of, how do we address a twenty-foot buffer on a theoretically just a GB portion, even though the code doesn't require it to be just on GB? This is like a first kind of thing. I don't know if the town has dealt with this kind of issue in the past, where it's split zone on the same property. And then there's arguments to be made, you know, the language of the code says, for multifamily or non-residential use abutting or directly across from, or a local street from any property in a residence district. Well, is there an argument to be made? This isn't abutting a residential property, this is the property. It's just a split zone line, right? So, again, we get the intent of the code and certainly want to comply with it, but we're in a tough position. We can't just, you know, pick up everything and say, let's move it forward a little bit. So, on the buffer, that's where we're sort of struggling right now.
And I guess that's why I kind of had the concept of, all right, so, we set up a twenty-foot line from the edge of that road. You've got some on the GB zone, and then you have the rest of the depth of the buffer in the R-15 zone. And it just needs to be, I don't know, somehow put in place with some kind of a line that it's governed by, so that when the next phase of development comes in, that buffer is retained. Because whatever you do in the R-15 behind there has to be whatever's allowed in that zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
Well, also, I think one of the future concerns that Liz and I discussed this with the buffer is that, at some point in the future, the residential, the R-15 portion of the overall site that is currently under one ownership may in the future not be under one ownership. It could be sold.
Sure.
It could be split off. And then, how do we define the buffer on the development site, the current development site, so that in the future, it can actually still be serving as a buffer, and it's well enough defined so that it will continue on into the future as a buffer?
Look, whatever, you know, whatever ideas or input there are to sort of, again, the intent, definitely want to satisfy it. On the flip side, if this R-15 one day, I don't know, a town official says, you know what, make this all GB or something, then, then you don't need a buffer, because I've heard the language of the code, it's not abutting a residential property. So, you know, there's a million different ways this can go. We definitely want to resolve it. You know, if the board is interested in, in putting a fence up there, or, you know, saying, not a twenty-foot, eighteen-foot, or whatever the case is. I also don't know the topography back there. I don't know, Jackie knows it better than I do, in terms of what we, what is feasible right now, maybe...
There's, there's grading right in that area. I mean, it looks like there's necessary grading for the road. If, if that is shown on the plans. That's why the limited disturbance goes out a little bit there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, so the development already kind of needs that area to be sort of reshaped to accommodate what's in the GB. And, and I don't, we've never had any comment being disparaging in any way about that. That's, those are necessary improvements.
Never suggested you did.
No, 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 I'm just saying that, I mean, I, I don't, you know, there's got to be some way of doing it. I don't even know what, a lot line revision, a deed restriction, something that puts a line on a map so that it's not just this fuzzy area. And then whatever goes on behind there has a set boundary. If, if it ends up being developed by the applicant's group, or if it ends up being sold, at least there is a boundary that sort of packages, this is this development, this is the remaining land that's available for something else to happen on. I would think, on some level, it might add value to the overall, you know, product that you're creating, because then it's more defined. That's just a thought, you know, if I was, you know, looking from the real estate perspective.
Understood. And like I said, we want to work this out, we want to figure it out. I'm just saying that it's, it's obviously a, if it, it's a unique issue. It's a unique issue, I think we all understand that. Whatever we can do to, you know, alleviate any concerns for the future, absolutely, we'll look into whatever is feasible. We welcome input, either, you know, from, from the board, from CPL, from Dominic, from whoever it is, in terms of what the code exactly says here. But, to the best of our abilities, certainly, we're providing that buffer. We are not against the buffer. It's just, whatever is feasible, whatever's possible. And I don't, I personally don't know, is that nineteen and a half feet? Do you need a half-foot, you know, variance? I don't know. I, that, that's something that, you know, we could obviously discuss offline, too. I know the conversations with our team and Liz have been very productive and, and welcome, actually.
A little bit ahead of time, but do you have any idea about signage? I mean, it's going to come up eventually.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I'd say we don't have any detailed drawings for signs yet. I did make note for next time to, you know, maybe find some details that we can provide on drawings. For the self-storage building, we anticipate one sign along the front. Just checking if we currently show something. And then likewise, for the car wash and the fast food.
Are you going to do anything different with the gas station? I don't know the signage on that gas station. You guys do, you go by it all the time.
The gas station is, as of now, we're not touching the gas station.
Oh, I understand what the signage is.
Yeah, I know, I said...
Yeah, there is signage on it, although I couldn't tell you exactly what it looks like.
And then you do, it's still happening, so... And then you do, it's still happening, so.
And then to the, obviously with the signage, too, to the extent that we provide, you know, a generic sign, let's call it down the road, you know, supervision of approval, whatever the case is for signs. We'll provide as always as best as possible.
Okay, we should slide the announcements.
Yeah. Yeah, it's something, we're going to have to cross that bridge.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll add the, I know for the self-storage building, we can add some, you know, detailed signage to that. I believe the car wash, we can add some. And then we'll have to see what we can find for the placeholder Wendy's and, you know, hopefully provide something.
Well, I'm planning on having a road sign for everybody. We're just hoping everybody's going to have their own sign on the building.
I believe there is a pylon sign.
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's going to have to sit down.
I figured I'd look at it.
Um, yeah, let me see if I can pull it for you.
Good deal with it.
Uh, can't really see it in this view too, too well, but it's down here in the lower right-hand corner.
Oh, actually, it's right there.
I think the site plan show locations of those pre-standing signs along the frontage, but, yeah, there you go.
It's like a wall.
That'd be interesting place for a sign, the traffic coming over, nobody can see it to the left.
And just picking up on details that need to be addressed, the county GML referral response letter had kind of a listing of some of the things that's, that still are remaining, like parking, possible further reductions in some of the parking areas might help free up some space. Again, the circulation and possible reduction of the access drive width at the front of the self-storage building. They mentioned the signage as Fred brought up. Lighting, further modifications to reduce glare, which Liz had referred to. And, you know, the architecture of the fast food building, which we've all talked about.
Jonathan, on page five, I had a comment, I guess it would be 11B5, where I'm, I'm kind of looking at the proposed parking and concluding that they're in pretty good shape because I'm envisioning, it's right in the middle of the page, that the self-storage requirement of 76 spaces seemed excessive. And I think the county also said that because most people are going to fill their storage units and they're not going to come back frequently.
Hey, they could rent it out to the stadium. There, you can walk down the sidewalk now to the stadium.
It's the beauty of sidewalks, right? We're, we're helping the town. No, the, obviously, you know, I'm sure you guys know, given the amount of self-storage applications that have come to the town in the recent, you know, 12 months or whatever, obviously self-storage is one of those uses where you don't need much parking, right? It's a very quiet kind of, it's not a mall. It's not a shopping plaza kind of deal. Yeah, so.
Yeah, and then on the other end of the site, you've got the car wash and the gas station, the convenience store. Plenty of people pull up to the pump, pay, run in, grab some at the convenience store, come back. And then there's those spaces near the car wash, which is a drive-through, which I'm guessing those spaces.
You need, you need three or four people working.
So it kind of ends up, I see it as a shared parking area unless the car wash says, don't you dare park there.
Is there, is there some kind of thing to like square footage of the storage to how much parking you're supposed to have to possibly consider people coming and going?
Well, the, the requirement, based on the calculation for the parking requirement for the code, is to have 76 spaces for the storage and I...
That's obviously too much.
Yeah, I mean, I think the county recognized that that was...
And the applicant has already recognized that.
No.
But the other, I think the other one for the car wash and the, and the restaurant and the gas station, I think the amount that's provided there right now looks spot-on.
Let me ask you, the car, the car wash, are you going to have vacuums? Therefore, you're going to need parking spots.
That might be something that we don't know right now. I don't know off the top of my head, but that's something we could definitely look into and get back to.
Well, a lot of people, you go to the car wash, you come out and then you go to a vacuum and then you need a car, then you need spaces.
And that would give them time for their cars to drip off so that they're not making a nice slick on Route 9D.
Yeah, so it is, it's parking spaces from what I understand at the, at the car wash.
If it's not for vacuums, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need all those spaces.
It's basically a car wash with nothing there, but like not even when you come out, like if you're going to come out and dry your car or do anything, I don't really kind of see that in this rendering, but.
A lot of car washes these days have like little vending machines even with, where they sell, you know, cloths to wipe off your car and stuff like that. And people sometimes find, most modern car wash facilities have vacuums, but even if they don't, some people like to come out of it, pull over, park somewhere and, you know, cloth off their car a little bit because it's not completely dried off. So it all, I mean, that all has to be looked into. Details.
So come back and see us when we have DOT.
Well, so I wanted to, I wanted to see if they could get, get any more feedback from the board on the architectural design of the buildings. The new one, the most change that we, since, that we haven't seen before was for the car wash. How does that strike people? The colors seem to be a little bit more reasonable, but I mean, it's a car wash, so what, you know, we could have it shaped as a car. That would be kind of cool, driving to a car wash that looks like a car.
It's a futuristic concept, right? It should be in a movie.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm just trying to get the board to wake up and comment on the design of the car wash.
Jump out at me as being, looking wrong or, you know, standing out as something that I would, that would ask to fix. They put some interruptions in the building on the, on the longer side, so I, I don't really see anything that jumped out if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. And, you know, with the fast food establishment, designs vary so much depending on what corporate brand you're having. It's really difficult to comment on the architecture of that particular building at this point. So, I mean, is there any idea of when a tenant might be signed up so that we could get some more detail? Or is it going to be a catch-22 situation where they're not going to sign up until there's approval?
Yeah.
In which case we've got now more than one catch-22. We have DOT already.
I was going to say, I don't know, I don't know the status of conversations with the tenant, but I, I will make a bold assumption that it's much easier to find a tenant if they know that there is a place to come to. So.
Same to the gas station. Once the lease is up, are you planning on keeping the same?
That, I don't know off the top of my head. If there's any at that point revisions to the gas station to modernize or whatever the case is, certainly we'll be back before the planning board and whatever other board, for sure, absolutely. But I want to say there's still a decent amount of time on the, on the lease for the gas station.
So one thing before we forget, since the lead agency notice circulated and 30 days has more than expired, we want to address the planning board declaring itself as lead agency. So we should have a motion for the planning board to declare itself the lead agency to conduct the coordinated environmental review under seeker for the basis industrial Route 9D site development plan and special use permit. Would someone like to move that?
I'll move it.
Fred moves it. Is there a second? It must begrudgingly, but.
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. So where are we? I know that the application, well, the, the submittal letter asked whether it would be possible to schedule a public hearing for January. I think you probably know the answer to that after the discussion tonight.
I suspect I know the answer, yeah.
What would that be?
How about you say it first?
One of the worst, again, another third catch-22, I guess. No, I...
Understandable. We, we need some more information. Hopefully, we have that by the January meeting and we could look at February for a public hearing. Obviously, we're not going to be unreasonable here. It's, when you wait for third parties, sometimes it's a little frustrating, but in the meantime, certainly we'll be in communication with, with Liz and I think all those conversations have gone quite well. I think we're moving toward a project that the town deserves and it's really going to clean up this site. It's going to clean up this site a whole lot and it's, it's a good development.
I don't know if we deserve self-storage, but that's...
It's going to be a beautiful site.
That's another discussion.
It's going to be a beautiful site. We got in right on time for the self-storage.
Does any board member have any other questions or comments that we haven't talked about? Certainly don't want to repeat them all, but.
Well, bottom line is, you know, because everybody's been going around about the basement and the storage and everything else, that, that's basically needed to make that feasible economically.
The project, yes.
I mean, I don't see any problem that, you know, you conceded to come down on the height. So, to go under and then you figure out how to make it waterproof and whatever you have to do for the water table, I can't see, but I understand why you need that space.
Absolutely. And, and yeah, that's a great point. It was in direct, remember, our very first submission was three stories and it was a building and we made it shorter, we, we expanded a little, we removed, we moved the site around a lot in our visits here. So that's why we're at the basement. But obviously, we're not going to, we wouldn't build a basement that is going to be leaking water left and right like the Titanic, right? I mean, it's going to be done the right way and the team has done this before. So thank you very much for that point.
And I think one of the points we were trying to make clear before about the basement height is that we, we really need documentation of what that basement height is and showing it on some kind of elevation drawing, although it's, most elevations show the exterior of a building, but, you know, I'm sure we'll figure out a way to, to document what that basement height is.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I didn't comment on and I don't want to go on about it, but is that, you know, there are potentially some variances and so having an idea of the parameters of the basement and whether or not that would also require any kind of variances. You know, it would be good to get those things moving sooner rather than later, just like the DOT thing. So.
Absolutely. We'll provide whatever details, hopefully, you know, alleviate any concerns with the, with the basement in light of Mr. Petrus's comment.
All right. So do you have any other questions or anything else you want to bring up tonight?
Nothing else that I know of. We thank you for your time once again. Happy holidays to everyone. We'll be seeing you hopefully in January with some updates and enjoy, enjoy the holidays. Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Thanks for coming.
And I'll say the same, everybody. Enjoy your holidays.
Thank you, Liz.
Thanks for having me.
Happy holidays. Okay, we're doing well. The next item is Continental Commons Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit and also a lot line realignment. I'm forward to review and consider a draft resolution of conditional final approval, site development plan and special use permit, and a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval, lot line realignment. So why don't we start, Dominic, with the resolution for the site development plan and special use permit?
Certainly. I'd be happy to. I have to say that I've been practicing land use law now for 25 years. 25 years. And never in my entire practice have I came across the resolution that is 27 pages long, single-spaced. So I'll just say that at the outset, and I say this for, for reason, is because I know that, and I believe it's, you know, been part of the board's practice before I came along, was actually to read these resolutions. And so I, I have no intention of reading this resolution verbatim for you tonight.
Thank you.
So I think I will spare everyone, you know, I will have you probably to sleep by page six out of 27 if I was to, to read it all. And I think, you know, it's, it reflects a methodology, if you will, of, of an approach towards an approval, especially one that was as complex and had a number of concerns related to it, associated with project and how it went through a very specific deliberative process before the board with a lot of public interest and revisions to the plans and, and comments being addressed and multiple public hearings and all of that. So this particular approach in this case, I think, is, is very instructive in the sense that it, you know, provides a, you know, Rosetta Stone, if you will, you know, for everything that has occurred in connection with this particular project, you know, and tries to encapsulate all of the things that, that have happened. So that said, you know, anyone that's interested in history and how it arrived at this particular, you know, juncture, all they would have to do is read the resolution. And, you know, it would lead them through that process. So all that said, I'm not going to read all of the various different whereas clauses associated with this because it really does, you know, define everything and all the steps that were taken up until this point. And bear in mind that the board previously granted a preliminary site development plan and special use permit approval for this project in December of 2019. So here we are, we're four years later and the applicant has been pursuing conditional final approval before the board. They've also been working towards satisfying various different conditions. That preliminary approval resolution actually was also incredibly detailed and had a number of conditions in it, including conditions that were ultimately forwarded into the conditional final because they were looking forward at the preliminary approval point at what was likely going to be required as a condition of final approval as well. So, all of that said, I would suggest that we move forward to the particular conditions that may be relevant now for the board to consider.
That sounds good.
Okay. And they start on page 18. And so there are outside agency approvals that remain to be outstanding or are in some stage of being applied for.
We have some updates, but.
Yeah. I mean, you want to stop, I'm not a roll. You want to stop?
No, go, go, go.
So, so, you know, in a sense, you know, like the, the conditions of the approval is, is that they have to obtain all of the various different outside agency approvals, including for the water and sewer district extension, which they've been pursuing before the town board, the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for the water supply and sewage disposal, Village of Fishkill for water supply, and also the DOT for the highway work permit for the proposed modifications within the right-of-way for Route 9. They also have to obviously obtain coverage under Speedy's general permit for stormwater discharges. There's also a catch-all for anything else that wasn't specified, but they might be required. Typically, they have to, as, as the board requires, a performance bond will be required and that amount is set by the town board. There's a maintenance bond required and that amount has been included as well based on the materials prepared by the applicant's consultants. Here, that amount is identified as $178,330. There is an inspection fee of $30,000. They're carried forward here, including for the stormwater management facilities agreement. And obviously, these are also all been in draft form. They just need to be executed if they're not already and presented prior to the site development plan being presented for signature or simultaneously therewith. There is also the covenant regarding the visitor's center. There's also a restrictive covenant regarding the, regarding the construction of the visitor's center. There is also the restriction of truck traffic into and out of Van Wick Lake Road. There is the event management protocol for special events that's going to be conducted on-site. There are easements and dedications regarding the proposed storm drainage and the utilities for the project. Prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall execute the agreement easement and covenants regarding the protection of the Point Four acre burial There is a mechanical soil stripping investigation plan that is required. And then we get into more standard notes regarding the final plan revisions. The tree removal, we've, we recently received a memo, I believe, from the building inspector saying that the trees were removed consistent with the previous approval by the board, but nonetheless, that is also a condition of this, a requirement that all fees are paid. There's also a separate wetlands, water course and water body permit, which was issued by this board in March of 2020. There is a separate resolution for the lot line realignment. They have to comply with that. And then there's the standard conditions regarding landscaping and screening and lighting and architectural design details. There's a limitation of use built right into the resolution, saying that the property can only be used for what was applied for. So, if there's any changes to any of the uses that are proposed on this site, they have to come back before the board for a site development plan amendment. There's a limitation on amenities, which means essentially that only that, what's shown on the plan can be constructed. There's also stricter compliance with the secret mitigation measures, so anything that was included in the board's amended negative declaration, which was adopted in December 2019, is also required. There's in all a total of 30 individual conditions associated, which I've just, you know, if you're begging your pardon, I just glanced over them, but, you know, in light of the board's extensive history with the project and also the number of appearances by Mr. Cooper and others, there's been a lot of updates and so I, I won't belabor the point. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have to the best of my ability.
I was just going to ask, the tree removal, condition number 16, since we do have Mr. Petrus's sign off on it basically, should we consider removing that one or should we keep it in just, and then that letter from Mr. Petrus will just serve as, you know, one of a number of documentations allowing the...
To be honest, I would keep it in because I think it was a concern of the board, obviously, that the tree removal occur and in accordance with the, the approval, it was undertaken and it was completed, but it, it provides a record of that, so, you know, in the absence of, I mean, if, if you're going to be all-inclusive, you might as well be all-inclusive.
Yeah, we, we, the applicant doesn't have an objection to that. We, it took, it took a little longer than we thought. I don't know if you remember, but in the, the, the stormwater management protocols that were in, were part of the, what we submitted, it said seven days of no rain before you could start. We didn't have seven, between September and October and even into November, there wasn't seven days straight of rain, so...
It's going to rain last weekend, it's going to rain this weekend, it's going to rain every weekend.
Yeah, you probably had like that sixth day and you were going, okay.
Believe me, I would call Dominic, Dominic up and say, come on, it's going to rain again, so...
All right. So, any, any questions from board members on the resolution?
No. Thank you, Dominic, for staying up late to write this.
Well, you know, and it, and it wasn't just, just me. I mean, you know, we had to actually recreate, you know, because we didn't have electronic files associated with this, so it did have to be retyped and in terms of the, you know, what was contained in the original preliminary approval resolution, and then, of course, it had to be updated and, you know, and it's not just myself by any measure, you know, the chairman, Debbie, John, all provided essential comments to put it in front of you in this form.
Thank you for doing that. Mr. Bodendorf, do you have any questions or comments on the resolution?
I do that.
All right. And the applicant has had a chance to look through it all and...
Yes, one clarification, sorry.
You did not want to stop my roll, yes. You didn't want to stop my roll.
No, 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 just one. Just for the record, David Cooper partnered with the law firm, Zerran Steinmetz, here. With me tonight is Stu Messenger from Bella, Jay Machado, the architect, and Dominic Brockley, the principal. Two, I guess, one, we already up to you on the tree removal. The other update I have is that the, the county has signed the, the water and sewer plans, or actually, I think Stu has the signed plans right with him.
Show them to you for a small piece.
Yeah, right, that's right. But we will have to, we will have to provide them with a mile or at the end of the day, but, but at least they've signed off on the plan, so...
Congratulations on the milestone.
Yes, yeah. So, then the only last clarification we just wanted to go over on, on the, on the resolution is actually on page 17 with respect to the, the timing for the special permit for the restaurant and the hotel. So, condition number three for the special permit for the restaurant indicates construction has to commence for two years and then has to be completed, sorry, has to commence within two years and then has to be completed within two years. The condition number three for the special permit for the hotel, which is right above it, says construction has to, has to commence within two years, but there's no completion time. We assume that that, it was supposed to mirror the other one, that it's two years, that's how we were going to operate, but just wanted to make sure that, that we're all on the same page. I don't think there's a need to change the, the resolution, but just so that we're...
I mean, that, that is the provisions of Section 150, 112. You know, the, the challenge sometimes in, in, you know, trying to bring all that stuff forward out of various different code provisions is that, you know, and I apologize for that, but yes, they should, they should read identical and they should read the same way as the restaurant.
So, tell us what page, reference that is again.
Yeah, page, page 17. Before I say that, let me just say one thing. We, we went through each and every single paragraph, as, as you normally do, and this is the only thing, so, so Dominic, don't please. This is a, this, you know, it's a good, it's a good template to have, so...
Oh, my goodness.
Page 17, condition number three up top, which is the condition for the hotel.
It, it doesn't have a timeframe for when construction must be completed. And then if you go down to the next set regarding the restaurant use, in paragraph three again, it does say that a construction has to commence within two years, but it also says that it must be completed within two years. And so, those, that portion regarding completed should be included in the number three above as well regarding the hotel.
So, you have that, Debbie?
I'm just trying to figure out where to put it in because we have about the extension of the extended permit periods in number three above, but not in number three below.
Yeah. Yeah. And likewise, that should be included.
All together, right?
Correct. They should, they should basically read identically.
I got it. No problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My apologies. I think at this point, by page 17, I was in a stupor.
So, with that one correction, if there are no further questions or comments, would somebody like to make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of conditional final approval for site development plan and special use permit for Continental Commons as reviewed and revised tonight and to authorize the chair to sign it?
So, moved.
Seconded.
Anthony moves it. Fred seconds it. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So, that resolution passes seven to zero. And so, we do have a second resolution for the lot line realignment, so why don't we do that one now as well?
Sure. And this one's a bit more succinct. This is just dealing with the lot line realignment. It's granting both preliminary and conditional final approval. The draft you should have in front of you would be draft number four, dated December 8th. And this is to transfer 0.305 acres from one tax lot to another as part of the plan of development. That requires a simple lot line realignment approval from the board. There's a number of conditions as it relates to the standard approval for this particular application. You may have heard me earlier talking about the prior lot line realignment. Approval resolutions, they require the deeds as well, you know, that, to effectuate the transfer, and there are no other special conditions.
Any comments or questions from board members?
No.
All right. And did you have a chance to go through that one as well?
Yes, we did. No, no objection, no comments.
Okay. All right. I'll ask for a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary and conditional final lot line realignment approval for Continental Commons as reviewed and, not revised, okay, as reviewed tonight and to authorize the chair to sign it. What are you pointing to? So, moved.
Try to get that side.
It's very distracting to see somebody pointing and not knowing what the...
Okay, I seconded.
Come on, John.
Second. All right. Now, I'm going to just take a nap.
No, I seconded.
We're going to take a break now.
We're still close.
All right.
I seconded.
Ravi seconds it. Come on, guys, stop fooling around. All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see everybody. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you too.
Happy holidays.
I'd just like to thank everyone. It's been seven and a half years. Dominic, you didn't begin the process, but I had black hair back then when it started.
Really?
But anyhow, I just want to thank everyone for your patience. It's been a long grind, but it's over finally and I wish you all a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Happy holidays. Thank you. Excuse me for a moment.
All right. All right. Well, people are walking out, so why don't we actually take a formal, like, no more than five-minute break? All right? We'll be back at 9:30.
Oh, good lord.
9:30, we're starting back up. The next item on the agenda is 21 West Edge Radiology Center Site Development Plan Amendment. Forward to review the application and support and documentation accepted and referred at the November 9th, 2023 planning board meeting. Welcome back.
Thank you, boy. You guys are timely when you said 9:30, not 9:30. Right, I, I, it's appreciated, very, very... I'll try to limit my comments to 30 minutes or less, so...
Less would be good, yeah.
Again, and thank you, I'm Jeff Kane with, with Kirchhoff Companies, here representing this, this project for New Radiology Center. I'm joined by, by Mike McCormick and Andy, Andy White from Liston McCormick Van Voorhees, architects, and Eric Schlobom from, from Inside Engineering to answer any questions and any, any, any comments that the board might have. I, I, you know, I think we've kind of gone over how the, how this, this project works. Radiology Center focused particularly on, on, on imaging with an expansion in the front, both an MRI and, and a CT. And in the rear, linear accelerator, again, specially designed for, to address prostate cancer and the needs of that, of that population. We're keeping water sewer drainage, for the most part, exactly like they are, some minor changes in the parking, upgrades to the, to the, to the landscaping. And I guess we've gotten a couple of comments and we can, I think we don't really have many issues with, with CPO's comments, really, kind of except for one, which I'd like to talk to the board about for a second, but John's comment was that we, we should talk to the Roambout Fire District about, and get their...
Yeah, let, let me cut you off for a sec. That was actually a, a carryover comment from another project review we used as a template and should not have, it should have been eliminated, but so, I think...
No wonder, no wonder, no wonder the chief was confused, so I'm, I feel, thank you. That's, I feel much better about that.
So, yeah, so comment number seven of our, our letter should be straightened.
Thanks. And then county planning, which, which seemed to be, I think, a little confused about some of the materials, what's going on, and again, we can have the architects go through the materials a little bit and, and explain them to the board, but I just want to say that there are no reflective materials on this, on this building, not intended to be. And I just want to reiterate that the, and, and I think Andy will get into this a little bit, but the lighting is dark sky compliant and all the new lights we showed actually were under the canopy, so there's, there's, there's no way lights getting, getting, getting up anyway. So, we, we think that there's just some confusion of the county as they, as they reviewed this. So, I'll, I think I'll shut up for a minute and maybe let Andy talk about the architecture again to, to reinforce the, to the board what we're doing here and then address any comments that the board might have, so...
Okay, that sounds good.
Again, I'm Sandra Ryan, Liston McCormick, the board's architects. And I understand one of the comments from Duchess County was the, I thought it wasn't the materials listed...
If you could just get a little bit closer to the microphone, please.
Yeah, actually, yeah, turn it toward you a little.
Okay. This is fine. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, just to talk through some of the materials, just to be clear, they weren't identified. This is more of a preliminary elevation. We just want to introduce the materials, but basically, the materials you see in the large masses in this are the metal panels for the gray sections here, the lighter brown oranges color here, which is not a great rendition for color. That's actually a fiber cement material. Here's a textured fiber cement material, just to clarify that. So, that's also these materials here and most of this material and the material here. That's a fiber cement textured material. And then again, on the, these areas, the larger masses of where the imaging equipment is actually located, that's a metal panel system, including, if you see this other textured material here, that's actually a metal panel as well. Those have been treated differently as they are the areas where the imaging equipment, when it's replaced in the future, that's a removable section for them to move that out of the, the room. So, that's one of the reasons it's been treated differently. It's intentional. The other materials that you see here, this is a profiled metal material. It's located at this location here and around the windows here. The last material we're using on the, the project is basically a wood finish at the main entrance at that location and here under the overhang to help define the main entry. So, those are some of the materials basically we've discussed and looked at at this time for the project. I do want to correct... I do want to correct Jeff for one item. I think I misspoke to him when I made a comment before. The type A fixtures from the department's comments are the ones that are underneath the canopies. So the A-type fixtures are only located under the canopies. The B-types are located at other locations along basically the north side, between the windows and at other locations where you have doors. For instance, have the staff entry in the back here. That's where that was shown. So as Jeff mentioned, those are all dark sky compliant according to information from the manufacturer. We'll provide additional information for the town after the meeting as the next submission, basically. They also had a comment about the 3,000 K color rendition. Both of these fixtures are available in that color rendition, so that's not an issue to meet that requirement. We're expected to do so. There was also a comment at the beginning, the lighting comments about the level of foot candles. We don't have an issue with lowering the number of light fixtures along the north elevation. Again, that's this elevation, the main elevation for the main entry at this location, and a secondary exit at this location. So we don't see any, an issue with reducing the light levels along this line to meet and being compliance with Duchess County's comments. Think that matches up. Oh, the other comment was on the transparency of the building envelope. We have not shown a lot of windows on this facility for a number of reasons, but basically it comes down to the imaging equipment, which are in the sections that are in the gray metal panels, here, 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 you're not really allowed to provide the windows. We need to shield that equipment, and the rooms that are adjacent to those are often the support spaces, that also needs to be shielded. So having transparent materials there is not going to be really something we can provide, unless it's a foam material, we'd rather not do that. We'd rather be true to what the usage of the building is. The other areas on, for instance, the southern elevation, these are mechanical spaces at this location, there's only a little light here because there's a break room behind that. We can increase the size of that. That window, you'll see an issue there, but most of the exterior where the additions are occurring, those are the vaults and the imaging rooms where it's not really possible to provide transparent building envelope, just to clarify that question, that comment from the planning department.
On facades where there are minimal or no windows, is there any opportunity to perhaps add some more landscaping that might help break up the architecture of the building a little?
Yes. There are on the sides, you can look at the site plan as well. I'm not sure if you'd like to...
Yeah, can we pull up the site plan again and just see what that looks like?
So we do have proposed landscaping in this area against the new addition, some landscaping in this area as well, and then a row of landscaping in this area as well. So adjacent to the proposed, there is proposed landscaping.
All right.
Is that landscaping commensurate with the height of the panels that will shield the equipment?
The landscaping against the building is all low-level foundation planting, there's just not a lot of, not a lot of depth there between the existing sidewalk and the building. So again, we wanted to break up, break up the bottom there. On the, on the front, really, the east side where the new expansion is, we have some larger plantings proposed, but around those existing sides, it really is just kind of low, low shrubbery you see there to break it up. But certainly that, you know, kind of that, kind of that, the main piece that you see coming in will have larger plantings.
Okay.
Which is the front door?
Yeah, right, so, right. It's really, the front door of Ruby Tuesdays is, this is kind of the corner of the existing building is right here, actually, that the door, has doors on this side and this side. So we've maintained the entrance in the same place on the, on the north side of the building, and that'll be the north side, will be the main entrance for visitors.
I have a question, it's a little offside, but is there a hum to the generator on the right-hand side? Is there any noise factor from that?
The linear accelerator?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know that it hums, but I do know that you won't hear it because it's encased in enough concrete that no noise is going to get out of that thing. I think it might, it may make some noise when it's operating, but I, but nothing you're going to hear exterior.
All right. Why don't we go to CPO's memo, and John, if you could just briefly describe those?
Sure. In terms of seeker, subject to concurrence from the planning board attorney, appears that the board could declare this a type-two action, given that the proposed addition is, or additions are less than 4,000 square feet.
I can hear.
Thank you. We ask that they provide a parking table showing existing proposed and spaces required by code for this use, showing the finished floor elevations of the building additions and some spot grades along the sidewalk and loading area, concrete washout area in detail for erosion control purposes, and some, a little bit more information on the roof drain piping, trenching details, and just confirming that there will be no utility conflicts where, particularly on the southwest side of the existing building. And if any modifications to any utilities are necessary just to detail those, so pretty straightforward.
All right, any, I think we had a couple of questions from board members, but any others? Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I think we touched on it last meeting. We asked about how many staff they were going to have and how many people in the waiting room, and I believe they said 16 staff, and approximately 10 in the waiting room, which would be 26 people. That leads me to question the amount of parking, and I believe it was also mentioned in the county's letter, but I'm pretty sure the town has a provision where we can go below the requirement as well. The planning board could potentially, you know, have that happen with, you know, land banking. With 26 being, you know, the maximum number of people, in theory, there's way too much parking. I see opportunities to add green, which would also address another one of county's comments.
Yeah, I had some notes on that same question.
What's the existing count of cause statement?
67 spaces, 59 is the requirement.
Right, and we, if this were a newer application, you'd hear no issues from me on building less parking, because it's just, it doesn't make sense to build more parking than you need. The issue that we have here is removing parking becomes a, becomes, becomes a big deal here. And we were looking to leave as much of this site intact as it is, rather than start to have a larger operation to remove pavement that's already in, in place there. So certainly the question is that because it exists, we'd ask to not have to remove the blacktop.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it was actually a decent suggestion by the county to recommend adding some landscaping within the parking area, because it is a pretty large area, and it would help to break it up with a little bit of landscaping, but I can certainly understand the practicality of keeping it as it is, since this is mainly a renovation and reuse project. It's not as easy as a blank site where you can, you know, put in the code requirements for landscaping within a parking lot.
I mean, I don't know if I agree. I see that row of 11 along the western edge of the site being a prime opportunity. It's the farthest row from the building. Could that not just be...
So let's, where is that on the plan?
So I think you're talking about...
The row to the left of the screen.
These spaces in here?
Yeah.
It's the row farthest from the building.
Well, what if you were to consider some limited removal of pavement, certainly would have to require some reconditioning of soil underneath there, but just in some selective areas to add a little bit more landscaping trees in there.
It might be easier to take out all 11 rather than a couple, let me, allow us to look at that.
That's why I was suggesting the 11, it just makes, maybe you could put one straight...
Right, the 11 puts us below, and you may know the, the code better than I do, but the 11 takes us below what is required, if that's, doesn't, I don't, wouldn't be pushed into needing a variance.
No, you wouldn't need a variance. The board can waive the requirement for that number of spaces without going to the zoning board. We've actually done that on quite a few projects in recent years. If that were, if the number that would result with the removal of those spaces would still accommodate your needs, that's certainly something we could do.
Right. Let me double-check with the medical team about the flow there and update the plans accordingly. And I don't know that, Eric, does that present any, does that present any drainage issues to take that parking out? It doesn't look like we have a, I don't know that we're flowing into that direction, there's no catch basin. Doesn't look like there.
Looking at it initially, yeah, the drainage would come here, so that would just be some additional landscape area that would consume the soil.
Quick question, how many employees are there?
Again, the calculated number was 26 within the various uses, so.
So how many parking spaces are there now?
There are, there are 59 required and 67 provided. So there's, there are eight more, after the improvements we proposed here, there are eight more than what was required by the...
And that's factoring into the employees?
Yes, yes. So it was more, it wasn't a lot more, we didn't really overpark it.
Okay, well, why don't you take a look at that, and if it looks feasible, you know, bring back a revision in the plan. If not, then come back and explain why it wouldn't work for you. Any other questions? Yeah, I think the county also mentioned that signage details would need to be provided and conform to town code, so I don't know what your timing on having signage details ready would be.
Yes, our intent certainly is to have signage that's in accordance with the code. I don't, I don't take, know that, I mean, I don't know what the building's actually going to be called yet. Is that a requirement to have the exact name of the building for who here, or?
No, I think basically to show what the sign would look like, its dimensions, you know, the color and materials that would be used, even the size of lettering, even though you don't know what it will say exactly yet, but sort of a prototype of what the sign would look like.
What we wanted to show was where it would go. We can, I think, update that just to show the conforming size. Yeah, right.
It was intended as a diagrammatic view.
Yeah. Okay.
Right, so what I think we'd show, we'd show the max size, and then if it's smaller, it's smaller, right, because then we'd get locked into some number if we don't want to build a sign that big, right? So that's, yeah, okay.
And the smaller, the better, but yeah.
Clearly, but I, but I, yeah, I get a little flexibility because we don't quite know yet.
Right.
And whether you're going to have it on the building or not on the building.
Right, the intent would be on the building, yes.
Okay. CPO's memo mentioned that this could be classified as a type-two action. Did I hear you concurring with that, Dominic?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right, why don't we have a motion to classify the application for amendment to the site development plan for the proposed 21 West Edge Radiology Center as a type-two action? What's, Anthony moves it, is there a second?
A second.
Ravi seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. All right, any further questions from anyone on the board or from the applicant's team? We will look forward to seeing revised plans based on what we talked about tonight, and hopefully that will address pretty much everything.
Great, thank you, we hope to see you in January.
All right, and happy holidays and happy new year.
Happy holidays to you as well, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is West Edge Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Flood Plan Development Permit. Board to review and consider a draft resolution of conditional final approval, site development plan, and a draft flood plan development permit. So welcome back.
Hi, good evening. Yes, we reviewed the draft resolutions and did not have any comments on them. We are actively pursuing the remaining conditions and are hopeful that you all will grant approval this evening.
All right. Why don't we ask Dominic to go through the draft resolution on the site plan first?
Sure, so I prepared a draft resolution. This is for conditional final, just to remind the board, you previously granted preliminary site development plan approval for this particular project, and now the applicant is requesting conditional final approval. The conditions are that they have to address any outstanding comments from the town engineer. The last memo was dated November 9th, 2023. The applicant also has to obtain all outside agency approvals for the project, which includes the approval from the Village of Fishkill for the extension of water and sewer service to the site, as well as the approval of Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for the same. There is a performance bond required, there is a maintenance bond, the amount of which has been set at $50,264. There's an inspection fee of $22,500. There's an easement and road maintenance agreement. This is for the access to Lot 6B, which has to be submitted for review and approval. I believe that there's already a draft that's been provided, so that will be part of the, any proposed request for sign-off, for signature on the plans. There are the standard conditions regarding final plan revisions and the requirement that all fees are paid. There is also the standard conditions regarding landscaping and screening, lighting, and architectural design in details. There was a variance that was granted by the zoning board of appeals, and so we've required that the applicant has to comply with the terms and conditions of the ZBA decision that was granted on September 19th, 2023. decision that was granted on September 19th, 2023. Standard condition regarding a limitation on amenities, only that what's shown on the plan can be built, as well as a narrative as to the limitations of use, which is only for the use that's been proposed on the current set of plans, which is for the construction of a 71,0524 square foot, gross square foot facility with nine parking spaces and related site improvements. If any proposed changes are contemplated in the future, then a site plan, site development plan amendment would be required from this board. The mitigation measures are also included as a condition of the approval, requiring strict compliance with all of the mitigation measures set forth in the board's negative declaration, which you adopted on July 13th, and that's pretty much it.
Anything about the bridge?
Say it louder.
Anything about the bridge?
Nothing other than what's shown on the plans, so not as a specific condition. Was there something that?
No, because I remember seeing something from Dutchess County planning about the bridge. Just came up.
I don't recall that.
I saw something.
I believe that design of the bridge and the retaining wall are conditions that we have to meet prior to gaining a building permit. I do not recall something about the bridge in the Dutchess County letter, but.
We get a lot of stuff.
I understand.
Do we just need to do a quick fix on the numbering here at the end here, the narrative?
I have that, thank you, Anthony. I saw that. Should be broken underneath instead of next to the title.
Thank you.
Okay. That's just a formatting thing?
Yeah, it's the numbering formatting.
Well, I think narrative as limited use would be number 17, and then 17 becomes 18, and 18 becomes 19, and that's it. Thank you. But content doesn't change.
Oh, yeah, and that 18 after narrative as limit of use is just misplaced.
Well, it's really, yeah, it's really 17.
It should be 17.
It's 17, but then there's an 18 after the title, so that should come out.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Okay. I got it.
Me too.
Is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of conditional final approval of site development plan for West Edge Self-Storage as reviewed and revised tonight and to authorize the chair to sign it? Brad moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Bob got there first. Bob seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. And then we've got a draft resolution for the flood plane development permit here.
Yes, sir. You should have draft number three. It's dated December 7th. And this one does have a little bit of additional detail in it because I thought it was important to note that the original proposal was obviously different in format and size, and it would have required not only a flood plane development permit, but also a town wetlands, water course, and water body permit. But due to the changes in the project made at the request of the planning board, the project now only requires a flood plane development permit, so they minimize their impact to the wetlands as proposed. And so this resolution has a space that should be filled out that should include today's date for the adoption of the conditional final site development plan approval. That is on page two. And the conditions are that the work has to be done in accordance with the approved plans. They also have to obtain coverage under the Speedy's General Permit from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. They have to employ the services of a licensed professional engineer to conduct periodic inspections during course of work within the special flood hazard area. And there's a requirement that that engineer also certify to the town of Fishkill that the work has been conducted in conformance with the terms and conditions of the approval. There's a requirement that as-built drawings has to be submitted, and the town of Fishkill also reserves the right to rescind or otherwise withdraw the approval in the event that the applicant fails to conduct or complete the work required in accordance with the approved plans. And the board also authorizes the town of Fishkill Building Inspector to act on its behalf as local administrator to conduct periodic inspections throughout the period of placement of fill on the site. And that's that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
All right. And you had a chance to review the resolution?
Yes, and we didn't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of flood plane development permit approval for West Edge Self-Storage as reviewed and revised tonight and to authorize the chair to sign it?
So move.
Robbie moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Actually, I think I heard Joey second it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. I think we're all set.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you.
Happy holidays.
Happy new year. So we've got next up is Walmart MFC Pickup Expansion Amendment to Site Development Plan. Board to review submission named by the applicant's representative on November 29th, 2023. Welcome.
Yes. Good evening. How are you?
So why don't I just update the board on the November 29th submission real quickly?
Yeah, so there are a couple of minor revisions. So we have a trench drain proposed over here and images of it, so we can see the extent of that. There's a few minor revisions that this consisted of. So this is on the bottom left corner of the building. Trench drain that are connected to the existing system, just to pick up any runoff within this area. Okay. Scroll through the next page. No revisions on this sheet. And then over here, too, we just have some minor drainage updates within this area. Let me zoom in just so it's a little bit more visual. This is just involving the canopy and building connections connecting to the proposed system here. And I believe that was it as far as any revisions. I know there's a memo issued, and I don't believe there's anything outstanding on that. So I guess I'm just wondering what would the next step here be?
All right. Well, for now, the next step will be for, we'll ask Mr. Bodendorf to just very quickly summarize the CPL memo, but I know it's, there's not a lot in it.
No. Regarding Seeker, we believe this could be declared an unlisted action, subject to agreement from the planning board attorney. And we only have one comment on the plans. We've asked that they add a note that all utilities to be, should be field located before any construction begins.
Especially cash.
Right.
All right. Any questions from board members? No.
What happened with the signage?
What happened with the signage?
We questioned the number of signs, and so did Dutchess County planning. We questioned the number of signs.
I think the question was about the blue pickup signs.
Yeah.
Which was, yeah.
Yeah, so that.
Is that in the folder of images that he could pull up?
I got it. It's the last one.
Is that what you?
So I think they're identical, my understanding, except blue instead of orange.
Well, what is the change in that from what it originally was? Because what you're showing is, I think this is the signage that you originally said and we would like to see it existing.
No, just the color change, I think.
Yeah.
Just the color change from orange to blue.
Well, I thought it was, I thought it was maybe the number, but I guess.
No, this is the one that just came in front.
Okay. I see the date on that one, but I, because I don't think we saw one before.
Yeah, I know. I know we discussed the numerous signs that would be going up into that pickup area, but I don't think we came to any conclusion one way or the other.
I don't remember.
And, you know, I guess I would be more concerned about it if this were a, an area that was very visible from a public roadway, but it really isn't. And, I mean, if this is a typical way that Walmart deals with these new pickup areas, I guess I'm okay with it. I mean, it will help customers quickly figure out, you know, what they need to do to pick up their merchandise and get out of there quickly.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think we just had requested an example of how it was, you know.
Yeah, what it would actually look like.
Implemented at another store, and I think this.
That's what it was, yeah.
Yeah. This provides that.
The other thing that came up, I think it was probably in the county's GML letter that we received at the last meeting, which talked about the possibility of adding landscaping in the parking lot. And, you know, although that is a code requirement for new development, I'm just not sure, like, exactly where in the parking lot that kind of landscaping would go, given the, the area is pretty well defined as, in terms of where the pickup area will be, and the area is pretty well buffered, it's like very well buffered from Route 9, as you can see in that image. So, you know, I think it was brought up, but I don't really know what could be done in conjunction with this fairly minimal expansion of the existing building.
Are you going to have another sign out on the road directing to wetland pickup?
A pod goes like wave-minding signage that's included in this set that directs people to this area. Right. I believe that's called out already, or maybe.
Yeah, was that in the construction details section or anything?
Yeah. So, right, this is the blue signage that we were just looking at. There'd be signs looking like this, just purely for, you know, providing information to anyone.
Directional signage.
Right.
So CPL's memo states that this could be declared an unlisted action, and do you agree with that, Dominic?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we need a motion to classify the proposed Walmart MFC expansion as an unlisted action, and I would suggest adding and for the planning board to conduct an uncoordinated environmental review pursuant to Seeker, since parenthetically this is a fairly minimal expansion project addition. Would someone like to move that?
Okay.
Second.
Brad moves it. Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. What about scheduling a public hearing for the Walmart MFC pickup expansion for the January 11th meeting? I think we're probably pretty much there.
As far as I know, we don't have any other public hearing at night.
Yeah.
Well, we, we don't have to have one.
I'd rather have one.
But in this case, in this case, the applicant probably would appreciate being able to move this along.
Definitely, yeah.
So is our motion to schedule a public hearing on the Walmart MFC pickup expansion for January 11th, 2024 at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible?
So move.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Yes.
Joey seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please.
On further discussion, why do we need a public hearing for this?
Because it's, it's a site plan. It's a site development plan.
It's, it's, it's on a piece of private property, and all the business is doing is moving something from one side of the store to the other.
No, it's added in addition to the building.
Okay, so, but it's still on.
It's not what we would classify as a minor site plan amendment, which does not require a public hearing and is a little bit more expedited. This is, we also took the same approach for the previous Walmart proposal on this same site and went through a public hearing on that one as well. And that one actually ended up being approved, but was not carried out by Walmart.
Right.
Does that answer the question?
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. Location of public hearing signs, so we went through this the last time, and I think we came up with two signs, one at the northwest corner of the intersection of Merritt Boulevard with Route 9, so out on Route 9, and a second one at the Walmart entrance on Merritt Boulevard, which there is only one entrance.
That works.
Okay. All right.
Wait, did you say the first one?
The first one at the northwest corner of the intersection of Merritt Boulevard with Route 9.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay.
All right.
So I think the next step then will be to hold the public hearing at the January meeting, and then if that is successful, then we can authorize our consultants to prepare the necessary seeker paperwork and a draft resolution of approval, which would then be ready for February.
Okay. And when do the signs need to be posted?
I'll get that all to you next week.
Okay.
There's an actual packet that you'll have.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and there's a timeframe within which the signs have to be put out there.
Yeah, I have to count down because of the holidays, so we try and get into the paper and so on.
Yeah, yep. All right. Do you have any other questions for us?
No, I'm all good.
Okay. Thank you so much. Happy holidays, happy new year.
You too.
Thank you.
We're doing pretty well. We have one item under other business, and I see Louise Daniele in the audience there who has been an integral part of putting this proposed relaw together. So this is the town. So this is the Town of Fishkill local law for a draft tree preservation law discussion. This is really just kind of an informational item that I wanted the board to get to know a little bit more about, the proposed tree preservation law. I have actually been working with Councilman Esteban, Councilman Mundanielli, and Building Inspector Joel Petrus, more recently, on a draft tree preservation law for, what, quite a few months now. The draft has undergone a number of revisions, and the town board has had several discussions on this, and actually, the town board opened a public hearing several meetings ago while revisions were being completed. And the hearing is being continued at next Wednesday's town board meeting. That's on December 20th, next week, and hopefully will be considered for adoption at that meeting. So Debbie provided board members with a recent draft of the local law, it was actually the November 30th draft. Since then, there was one minor change in it, which is not substantive in any way, so there's a slightly new version going to the town board to consider approval next week. But the proposal is consistent with, and in fact was recommended in the recently adopted conference of plan update. The overall purpose of the new law is to prevent indiscriminate destruction, destruction of trees in the town while protecting the rights of residents and property owners to maintain and improve their properties. The new law provides specific standards and requirements regarding tree removal and preservation for developers appearing before the planning board as well. So the proposal combines tree removal, tree preservation, and commercial timber harvesting into one new chapter of the town code. So hopefully you've all had a chance to take a quick look at it. We actually collected quite a number of sample tree preservation laws from around the Hudson Valley, and they were very helpful in us putting together the proposed law. We did a lot of fine tuning of them to make it more specific according to the Town of Fishkill's needs. So, I mean, just going through a couple of quick things, there's a new clearing and tree removal permit that'll be required if tree cutting meets certain thresholds. The planning board may require a tree preservation plan with specific requirements for removal and protection of trees over a certain size, and that size would be 18 inches diameter, breast high. And that would be for site plans and subdivisions coming before the planning board. For applications not before the planning board, the town building inspector's zoning administrator would be the point person to administer and enforce the new law. There is a specific tree clearing exception clarifying the planning board procedure to allow seasonal removal of trees, recognizing protection of Indiana bat habitats, which would be at the sole discretion of the planning board. So some of this is stuff that the planning board has already been doing during our reviews of subdivisions and site plans, the tree preservation, the seasonal, allowing seasonal cutting for bat habitats. But we've been doing them without any real solid direction, so this law includes some much more specific standards and requirements for when we do those things. The law would also continue most of the existing provisions in the current commercial timber harvesting operations section. That's something that's actually most, although it would be administered by the building inspector, zoning administrator, but it's something that would actually still be approved by the town board. And I would bet there haven't been one of those in recent years, but it's there, and will still be in the new law. And of course, the new law would include enforcement provisions and penalties for noncompliance with the new regulations. So I think we're pretty happy about where this is ending up. We think it's going to be really great for the town's environment and for the residents in Fishkill. There were a few comments made at the public hearings, which we tried to address, and actually, it did result in the one change that's going to the town board for next Wednesday. So I'm really looking forward to this, and looking forward to the town board adopting it, and I think it's going to be a really good thing.
Jonathan, what's the minor change?
The minor change?
Since I studied it before.
Yeah, it would be hard to find it if you didn't know where to look. It's really, so it's in Section 140-8, Section A, where the approving authority can impose conditions on the granting of a tree removal through it. And so A already included days and hours of removal operations, size a number of trucks, and routes to be followed, and we added wording based on comments from one of the residents. And it says, "and location and methods of storage of baled trees on the site." So that's not in the version that you saw, but that's the only wording that we added. A lot of the other comments, we discussed quite a bit at a meeting a few days ago, and we pretty much determined that most of the comments were already covered in the law, in, in different sections of the law, and also in other laws, like the state DEC's regulations regarding the, the bat habitat thing. So I think we did a pretty decent job.
So once the town board approves, when will, it will become effective immediately?
Well, it becomes effective once the town board approves it, it gets filed with the Attorney General's office, I think, is that right?
Department of State.
Department of State. Oh, well. And that takes, you know, usually a few weeks or so. And so the law will actually be...
Depends on how quick you run it up there.
Yeah.
Does this proposed law give the planning board statutory authority?
Drive it up there.
What do you mean by that? By statutory authority, the new law will be in the town's code, so it gives us authority to follow the code provisions.
To follow the code provisions, but if we make a recommendation here...
This is more than recommendations, this is actions.
So, so, so we're the policing agency for the town on this?
No, 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 no.
You're not code enforcement.
No, the code enforcement officer is the building inspector's zoning administrator, and that, he would still continue as the authority that has to not only implement the regulations for those actions that do not come before this board, because we only deal with site plans and subdivisions and land development approvals. But this will also apply to other times when individual landowners don't need our approval, but require approvals based on the thresholds in this new law for clearing, cutting trees on their sites. And so if they meet the thresholds, then the building inspector, zoning administrator would be the approving authority, as we call it in the law, for those actions.
So the threshold is the 15 trees per year, depending on how many acres you have, is that the threshold you're alluding to?
And the size of the trees.
That's, yeah, and the size of the trees, and a number of other things that are in here.
From a spirit point of view, I think this is absolutely the, the right thing to do, and I support this 100 percent, it's just that the, the details associated with the enforcement actions...
Yeah, every enforcement...
...are a bit onerous to me.
Well, the...
But then I started reading them, and they're like a cookbook, right? For lack of a better term, there, it leaves very little leeway for somebody to make an argument, and that's okay.
Which is usually a good thing in a law, although, although it does provide...
But, but we need to, we need to consciously be aware that that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
I'm sure the town board is, so...
And, and I think the whole time we were developing this law, we were cognizant of the need to provide a balance with property owners' rights to, you know, use their property in a way that they want to use, and not be so burdensome that it would make it difficult for people to, you know, to use their property that way, but also more specifically to make it more clear what developers can and can't do when they come before this board. You know, we've, we've done a couple of tree preservation plans without really knowing specifically how to do it, and we, we kind of, we used existing provisions of the town code, don't get me wrong, we didn't just make it all up, but we didn't have a lot of guidelines and standards to go by, and now we will. And with, the same thing with the, the seasonal clearing for Indiana bat habitats. We knew that we could do it, but we didn't really know, we didn't have any specific guidelines for doing it. And that's, I think those are two of the key parts of this law that we didn't have before, that now we have some very, some good direction on how to do those things as a board. But I think that, again, the actual enforcement of compliance with the overall law is still up to the building and zoning department.
Yeah, what I, when I said sounded like it took away room for argument, what I was looking at as a homeowner or as a property owner, right? But, but again, normal, I mean, this is four acres is a minimum, 15 trees per year is of a certain size, so it leaves a lot of room for individual property owners to not be involved in this particular...
Right.
...law. But at the same time, the harvesting goes without saying, the permit requirements, but there's an intermediate area there that...
Of course, the larger property that a owner has, the more trees they can cut in a given year without having to get the permit.
Right.
There's always room for an argument, though. There always is.
Yep.
We have a code that said you can't park cars on residential, yet it happened. And there was no room, in my mind, for an argument there, and the zoning administrator, building inspector approved it, and it happened. And people were stunned. So there's always, if you get the right person to approve it, you can get anything. That's what it burns down to. You can get anything.
This is the statutory authority that I was alluding to, so the enforcement, the statutory enforcement is not the zoning board, or not the planning board. Zoning board has statutory powers.
No, I see, I disagree. It would be exactly the same, in my mind, unless someone can clarify it to me, as what I went through when Healy was doing their project. I went before the town board, I came before this board multiple times, I went to the zoning board, and nobody said they had authority. The only person in this town that had any authority was the zoning administrator, building person. That was it. Nobody could stop him, nobody could override it, and I was told to my face he didn't even have a boss. So anybody can do anything if you get the right person to sign it. There's always wiggle room. You can have it as code, you could have it as anything you want, but it's the way it is.
To me, those things are things the town definitely needs to address as time goes on, but it's certainly no reason to not pass a law like this that the town really needs.
Oh, I think they need a lot of laws passed, absolutely.
So...
I'm pretty vocal, I'm a little, probably a little more vocal than most people, but that's the reality of the situation, and it's a fact.
Well, we had, we had one of the, one of the education sessions that we had last Saturday was very interesting, because it talked about typical boards in typical towns...
Karen, I'm sorry, we need to use the microphone, because we're still on camera.
And, and zoning, and statutory authorities, and the ability to delegate those. So my question here was really, does this give statutory authority to the planning board, which we then would delegate enforcement to particular, and the answer to that is, I guess, no. The statutory authority still lies with the zoning board, and the zoning board delegates that authority to somebody to enforce it. And that's what I got out of the...
No, 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 the zoning board doesn't delegate any authority, it's the town board that delegates the authority.
Yeah.
But, but the statutory, doesn't the, the zoning board have statutory authority? Maybe I've misunderstood this.
No, I mean, the, the planning board, the zoning board, and the town board all have their own statutory authority given to us by state enabling legislation.
Right.
I don't think we have time to go through a whole discussion here, and you do need to take some more courses that will...
I won't, absolutely.
That will make you feel more comfortable.
Count on it.
But the town board is the legislative body and authority of the town, and they're the ones who pass the laws and give the zoning board and the planning board the authority to do the things that we do, as stated in the town's code. So we have different authorities from the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals is really there to, to provide variances and relief from some of the code provisions under certain conditions. The planning board's authority is to approve site plans and subdivisions and several other things in the code, based on the standards, guidelines, and requirements in the town code, also following the rules of the town law. So that's enough for tonight.
Come on, John.
I'm sure Dominic could give us a three-hour lecture on it, but I don't think he wants to tonight.
I mean, this proposed local law removes a lot of gray areas for us that, that we've been, we've been dealing with for quite a few years now, so I appreciate the efforts that were put in by the entire team, including the town board. So this is, this is another tool for us, that's how I see it, so...
Yeah.
You know, a lot of time and effort went into it, and, you know, that, that is appreciated, it is a step in the right direction, so, appreciate it.
Danielle?
Yep. Louise, were you here at the beginning of the meeting?
No.
Oh, so you missed my, my kind words about you. You're gonna have, you're gonna have to watch the video.
How's work, you guys?
And we also relayed your nice comments to the board about the wonderful work that the whole board does. Yeah, why don't you come up?
I'll just be really quick. I just want to thank each and every one of you for volunteering to be on the planning board. Your board takes the most time, and I realize that, and all of you put a lot of effort into it, and our planning board is the way that it is, and we have good questions, and the people and myself are grateful for all of you for volunteering. So my last meeting is next Wednesday, so I just want to thank everybody on board for their service throughout the years. Thank you.
We can give you your share.
Yes, that's right, the board thanks you for your service, and we hope that you'll, I'm sure you will stay involved in various different activities of the town, and I definitely enjoyed working with you on this proposed tree law and working with you as liaison of the board. So you'll have to go back and watch our comments, but that's basically it.
All right, you can wrap it up now. Thank you.
But thank you, thank you so much.
Happy holidays.
Who would be there here on that?
I don't know. That'll be up to the town board to designate a new liaison.
That all happens next year?
So everyone have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Anything else board members would like to bring up?
Motion to adjourn.
And so a second.
Second.
I won't even go through the motions. All right, everyone.